It's 201. The media will now come to order. We have all of our trustees, with the exception of trustee Robinson, she contacted me last night, she'll be 15 minutes or so late, but she's expecting to be here. Assistant Director, Business Manager, the treasurer will not be here today, I understand. General Counsel is not coming today, and we have our communication specialist, Megan. So we do have a quorum. And as a new chair, I would like to ask Almighty God to give me guidance and this board to his will, do a good job in the tax papers. Next up on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance, so please stand to recite a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands on nation under the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the area for public comment. Speakers, please state your name and community. Speak for no more than three minutes. Persons addressing the board are expected to observe a level of stability in the quorum appropriate for a public meeting. No public attacks or disruptions from the audience members will be tolerated. First person we have today is Lori Dobrasky.
I'm Lori Dobrasky, I'm here in Harrison. Wait, do I turn?
Technically, you're addressing the board. So mostly us, the audience as well.
First, I want to say I love this library. I love what Annie and her team have done. I moved here 24 years ago, and I have been, it's just always been one of my favorite little stops to have a break and come to the library, whether it's an activity, borrow books, talk to someone, any number of things. The average American, I learned recently, reads at a sixth grade level. At this point, we should be putting all our resources into our libraries and not taking away resources from our libraries. And one of your comments is, you know, that you want to do a good job for taxpayers. And in my mind, as a county taxpayer, one of the few benefits that our tax dollars filter down to our little town of Harrison is right here in this building. We don't benefit that much from most of the dollars that go elsewhere in the county. This is what we benefit from. It's really important to us. The library serves as a community hub. It is a small town, you're either at the bar or the ice cream shop, maybe at the store, and it's short of the park or the beach. But there aren't that too many places in any community, really, that you're not pressured to purchase something. A library is one of those safe places where you can go, you can have your book club, you can have young children's story time, you can have hobby clubs, you can have teen activities, teens can hang out. It has just always been one of those places where meet up with someone, have a conversation, find interesting reading materials, you know, because we're a smaller library, you're more drawn into, you know, the nonfiction section and, you know, instead of having this huge area, find something interesting in there. But while on that thread, I recently learned that we're losing our network. And for someone like myself, and Annie will attest to this, it also works here, I have some really weird requests. And that, that network came up with my requests for my nonfiction books and the occasional fiction, too. I'm concerned what's going to happen when we don't have that network and, you know, that remember that sixth grade reading level, where is that reading information going to come from? Education is presenting different ideas and allowing a person to make their own decision. If you're not doing that, you're brainwashing. Just to throw that in. So one of the things that we have taken a whole while up there is movies. We have a few friends who choose not to pay for Netflix, who choose not to pay for cable, and yet they like to watch movies. You know what they do? They're over there. And again, because it's a small library and because of that network, the titles that this couple, in particular, that's our friends, come up with some really interesting movies that are based on true stories and just other fun movies.
Yeah, you need to wrap it up if you don't want to. It's okay.
And
You can throw another sentence, too, for your short list.
I just want to mention again that our tax dollars come to this library, and it's an important feature of our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Dawn Griffith.
Good afternoon, I'm Dawn Griffith, I am a Harrison resident, I use this library quite frequently, as does my husband, as well as the library in St. Mary's. I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here, this is the first time that I've attended one of these, so I came here to learn what's going on. I don't like to rely on rumor and hearsay and everything, but I have heard that we are no longer going to be part of the CIN, which is really disappointing. I also like to have a variety of materials to choose from here at the library, and I feel that that's going to hurt the diversity, things that we can read and check out, as well as potentially limit other things that we are involved in as library, including Libby. I know it costs money to be part of Libby, which my husband uses pretty much every day, he's reading books on his tablet. So I just wanted to put that out there and to let you know that we do care about the library, I'm here to support the library and the librarians. Thank you for everything that everybody does to keep the library, and it continues to be there. I'm also not in favor of local entities trying to put more restrictions on the library than what we already have for laws federally and with the state of Idaho. I hate to see restrictions, book banning, lawsuits, things like that, I don't think that this is the place for that type of thing.
Thank you. And the last speaker, I hope I did the name correct. Risa Bandry. I took a shot, apologies if it's incorrect.
Yeah, that's all right, impossible to Kai Sa Bandry, I live here, just outside of Harrison. I brought some visual aids with me. So I also brought my son with me, his name is Hayden, he is almost six years old, and he's been coming here since he was itty bitty. He grew up here. And this has been one of the most valuable places for his childhood, it's outside and here. And this has been a great community hub, just like the other women mentioned, for meeting people, for learning, for great experiences, the story time, we come at least once a week, sometimes twice a week, but we come to just about every story time. And we really miss Miss Laura, that was a really important personal connection that isn't easily replaced with rotating staff that come in even though they're wonderful. I wanted to also express how excellent the staff is here, they know the kinds of books that we like to read and like, we were doing math books. Well, it just so happened they knew a great one about zero, so they set it aside for us. They know he really loves the ocean, so they set aside special ocean books for him. And behold the octopus, like, it's just personal and excellent. So I wanted to mention that. And then the other part about losing access to the CIN, so these are all books that I got for him, we're homeschooling. These are to learn about math. They're so good, all of these are great books. These two came from this library, they're wonderful. We've checked them out actually several times. The rest of these all came from CIN libraries. Portland Lane, from like Mullen, Tencent, I don't even know where these came from. But these are all from the CIN. And so as we lose access to those, we lose access to really important resources for homeschooling families like mine. It's a huge loss, and I think you've made a big mistake. That's about all I have to say.
Thank you. This is for you.
And thank you for being in Harrison, nice to see you.
Thank you for coming. Next item on the agenda is, I think it number five, the consent agenda. It's the person we can look at other minutes from the last meeting in June. Anybody have their hands up, no?
I have one more.
One small grammatical. Second page, paragraph 12. About six or seven lines down. It just says, mature content, collection furniture, shelving, so, okay. Oh, next sentence. With the, I think it should be the hiring of a collection development manager. I just, it's a small matter. But if you want me to pick through these things, I'd be happy to, every month. And I have no other, anyone else have anything else regarding the last minutes? Okay, we'll stay on the subject. I just put them up on here is the minutes from the CIN meeting of April 16th. Everyone have a chance? I'm looking at it, okay, any issues with it? And the next item, and the number five is the CIN financial statements. I didn't like my, I put that trustee class. Before you really have any say on the message, what they've reported, so all we can do is add to the record. I'm not sure why I get them either, other than for information, I mean, it's not our meeting, so it's just something we inherited before our time. Any questions on it? Let me get my chair cheat sheet out here. In the case, if there's no objections to the, oh, let's see, plus.
Yeah, I object to your suggestion change on the meeting minutes. Just like, leave it the way it is.
We will, okay, leave them as they are. The consent agenda objection. Consent agenda is moving on to the next item on the agenda today is number six, the CIN's financial statements for the month of June. I think I wanted to comment on it before. Before we jump in. Yeah, so before people, the last meeting we discussed making sure we identify which general ledger line we're on, just so it's clear, so we're not only on the same sheet of music, but the same line I had on there. And I was also going to say, and this includes myself, before you ask a question about a line item, it's probably best to go look at the definitions or rather the explanations on the accompanying pages, because I find answers there sometimes, the questions they asked, I didn't have to ask. And so my first commentary, because I'm taking advantage of being the chair, is I was happy to see a detailed explanation on GL number 415, which was a co-op electric agreement. I didn't know what that was, and there's a detailed explanation of what that money is, it says, I think it said that they, they don't get taxed, but they pay some kind of a fee, but in any case, I looked it over, and that satisfies one of my questions from a previous meeting. With Peter Smea, my asking the director, the assistant director, county appears to be a little overdue on some property taxes there for GL number 400. Any update or is that normal?
That is normal. We spoke with the auditor a couple weeks ago, and she was explaining that the end of each fiscal year, there, she has consistently seen over the last decade about $200,000 that we don't receive at the end of the year, that gets put into our new fiscal year as accounts receivables that we're still waiting on. And we're not the only entity that has this happening throughout the county. So she suggested that it might be time for the board to put a little pressure on the county to find out why we aren't getting the full money that we're supposed to be getting.
Is that something that is done by you and director? Since it's an operational issue, I assume it's something I'm bringing up as a board member, but who do you think owns that?
I think it's, there's a little bit of unpacking we can do, finance office patient with the county, just to kind of cover what, why they choose this practice at the end of this year, so I don't think we're going to report it to be yet, but I mean, it would come a time where it would come to this sort of governance level. And speaking with people at your level, the other entities in the community to figure it out. But we're sort of in the information gap stage as far as why they thought that last day they would have done this at the end of the fiscal year, so.
And they just looked at it, and it appears that we're $778 behind, I mean, $778,000 overdue from accounting. He's looking at what our budget was, what we actually got, since we're 75% of the way through the fiscal year. Questions, God trustee, yeah.
Yeah, line 475, when the education income, I didn't find that in the analysis.
Thank you all, we'll find out next month. And I do want to address Mr. Hamley's question about income. When the property taxes currently, we have received 59.89% of the year-to-date budget. And in July, so January and July is when we get the majority of the property tax. So we should see a significant increase next, for July income.
Let's see, plus.
I'd like us to say which sheet we're going to do first about the income sheet, we used to have income sheet statement first. Looking at income, the chair, sure.
We are looking at the financial statements, it's a free-for-all, I guess, so I don't care, I'll tell anyone, second or third. I'll mix and match, but I prefer to just do one. I'm sorry, I think she used to be in the back, so it flipped around too, so I decided to look at the front anyway.
Balance sheet, the first sheet. I'm, was going to ask about current assets, 148 property tax receivable is 296,000. And you're talking about 780 something thousand, I don't know where that is. And I don't see that in the 400s. What Steve hasn't referring to, or what the answer was, but it sounds like receivable, is that on the balance sheet? What was due at the beginning of the year from the county, is that what you're referring to, business manager?
Yes, that's exactly right. So at the end of last fiscal year, there was 296,972 dollars that CLN had not received from the county.
So I'm personally going to call the legislature's office, or actually the legislature's state.
Session?
Yeah.
County clerk?
No. Anyway, it's another subset of the office, but anyway, and ask about that, because I have talked before. But I would not expect much for revenues on 400 until July 25th, that's when the second half happens. So next month, it will include July 25th, so it'll be on there. So I would like to put in a personal request that, starting next month after that July 25th, if we go back to adding the calculated carry forward, because that's when it becomes important. Because then we can see instead of guessing what the property tax is going to be, we know what we have, so. Anyway, that's important so that we see how we're doing as we approach October 1st and see how many we have. But those are the two things.
Other questions, comments? Okay, I'll go with one since you just went in. Looking down at the L line number, let me see it here. What sheet? Sorry, page one of two, it's on the expenses and revenue and expenses sheet. And we are, line item number, it's the grant one. 645, 650, and 655. I'm guessing, if I was listening to you, director in a past meeting or two, is some of that money shifting up towards programs, since programs appear to be well over what we budgeted for? I just want to make sure, is that what we're doing? I think that's what the plan was.
Yeah, we're going to, the CLN friends and post-fall friends' revenue is where that'll be reported, and it won't show up in the next fiscal year, in the next, but it won't show up in the expenditure line. As if we were paying them back, it's actually going to go to the fund, or to the GL code that it funded. So this is why you'll see, and we'll talk about this later this evening, but the, most of the youth program line will always, projected grants will always be higher than the budget, because they typically absorb the 45 or so thousand dollars in grant money that comes to the top. We're trying to just be more transparent, with money coming to the top is revenue, money going out, showing where it actually gets spent.
It's custody costs.
So back on the first sheet, the balance sheet. I would like to see broken out, so on the second sheet, the income statement line, 480 shows how much we've taken from the balance. Or I guess that's how much I paid so far this year. Amount, we basically in an account, and it's probably buried in the ICS somehow. But if I could see that broken out, maybe a subset or something of the other account, because I'd like to know how much I currently, there is left to spend on materials.
Isn't that like, there's fun?
Yes, so I heard your request, and it is at the bottom of the income statement. Instead of the balance sheet, you'll see a little asterisk, and it says I-CRIMP remaining funds, 228,659.68. Would you prefer that to be on the balance sheet? It's at the very, excuse me, the very bottom of page two of two of the income statement.
It's also in the narrative for GL code for 80.
Yeah, I it's not really income, it's a balance, I'd like it to be on the balance sheet, so that I can see our Mountain West account or ICS. That, there's, until we use it up, there should be, I think, it should be a balance, so. Asterisk.
If you look on page two of two of the income statement, underneath the folded line, it has asterisk, I-CRIMP remaining funds and the amount. So the way that the accounting system works is it's exported to Excel, and then I can print it. In order to make sure everything's transparent, we're just taking it straight from the accounting software. So that's why that was just added at the bottom, because it's not part of the software's report.
Well, is it? Part of the Mountain West, 241,000 dollars. Is this, that 288 anywhere on the balance sheet in some account?
The money for I-CRIMP is in, one in the balance sheet, under other assets, GL 110, ICS 912, currently 2,463,110.70. So that 289,000 of I-CRIMP, I'm sorry, 228,000 of I-CRIMP money is in that ICS account.
So I guess, I'm okay with doing it this convoluted way, but I, that's what I was hoping is subset, maybe, and then line under it, showing that it includes the I-CRIMP, so that, and I know where, or we know where it is, too.
We asked you to make sure when I read that, that's the bothersome.
Possibly on page two of two, where the asterisk and the I-CRIMP remaining funds that you add in, possibly you could put parentheses ICS, oh, 110, ICS-912 location or something. That should clarify where that money is.
Does that conflict with any accounting standards?
No, but I, I can put it at the bottom of the balance sheet instead of the income statement, since that references the GL 110, which is on the balance sheet, people like me.
Would everyone concur on like that?
I'm fine with where it is, I'm just saying maybe you should, if it would make trustee class more clear on it, but where that fund is located, or where that amount is located. I'll have it, you have power words for you guys.
Yeah. Can you make it invisible in some manner? Is that good enough for you, trustee plus?
If it doesn't matter, it belongs on the balance sheet.
Yeah, it'd be, but it's going to be all out somewhere, it's just, good.
If it was on the balance sheet, it's easy to do.
Everyone concur with that, okay?
I don't, I don't know what we're concurring.
Basically, the ICS balance, remaining balance, will be reflected specifically somewhere, or identified on the balance sheet. So we know how much money is left.
From I-CRIMP.
Yes, my
Which we already do, because it's on that page. But so you're saying put it on this balance sheet page?
Well, it's, it's, it's money that's, I think, included in the fund as a whole, but it's not
It is.
It's not earmarked or called out specifically, is that correct?
Yeah, there's no harm, we'll have it in both ways. We'll have the asterisks at the end of the statement, and we'll have a clear background for balance sheet as well, there's no harm. And that's just more transparent as to what's inside of it, I guess, now, so.
You want to agree with it? Yeah, I have one question left for me. Jumping down to, on back on the income and revenue and expense sheet, page one. And like a GL 708, 716, and 717. Those all show actual money spent. Nothing was budgeted. So wouldn't that show an overage for year-to-date budget shouldn't be a negative number, I guess. So can the year-to-date budget percentage be zero? If we're spending money we didn't budget for, I'm not sure I understand that. Can go more specifically. So 708 is vehicle maintenance and mileage. Says that we budgeted revenues correctly, we budgeted zero for this year. We've spent 2,400 some dollars, yet the percentage the budget this year is so far spent, zero. Not sure it's calculated correctly.
The reason that happened is because those are GL numbers that we added after the new fiscal year started. So they were not part of the original budget for this fiscal year. So there's no budget for it to calculate or even show negative, we just are showing you that we're splitting it out more with transparency.
Anyone else have any other questions regarding the financial statements? Want to include the unique sheet, I guess, that part of our financial statements? It is. And I remember last month that trustee class, I believe, was curious whether we have any way of showing. we have any way of showing, this may be another company's production here, this report. It shows how much outstanding balance we have of, folks are either overdue or lost. Because I think this company's job is to go collect the, the overdue books or the overdue money. Giving us, I guess, return of fourteen for one retail dollar. Trustee plus is curious, so how many other books are hanging out there? We have like ten thousand dollars of the books. I think that's what he was asking.
So I went into, what I understood the board was wanting was an understanding of how many patrons have been sent to collections. And so I did an analysis on that and sent an email to the director. We didn't, neither one of us brought that with us today, and it's not on this report because this is not what we generate. But basically, it's about a thousand patrons that we have outstanding and we usually send about eight to ten on average per month to collections. So that's what I understood you wanted, but if there's something else, please let me know.
Is that trustee plus?
I think that was what I'm asking, but I'm also trying to reconcile, where does this money total, that would be for the month, or does that show up as income? Income state. I see a hundred and eighty two dollars for lost paid books. See that on the sheet?
If you look on the income statement, GL number four five zero, income lost and paid books, current month, one hundred eighty two dollars and twenty five cents.
That's what I was thinking, but I don't see it. You need that one hundred and eighty two dollars sheet that I see.
Okay, I see what you're asking. I will look into that to bring more clarity next month.
That satisfies your request, trustee plus. Does anyone else have any other questions or issues regarding unique or the financial statements? This discussion on that, hearing no objection, the answer reports for the period ending, I believe it was in thirtieth, twenty twenty five, we're hereby approved. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Harrison Library Report and Report. I want to make sure I get the names correctly, I asked, and I think it's right, honey. You see him?
Amazing.
Is that right? Oh, I got lucky, okay. I wrote it in my own language. Not the way you spell it.
Hello, good afternoon and welcome to Harrison, if you haven't been here before. I'd like to share a little bit of the history this year. Would you like me to use that? Hold on, I'm having technical difficulties. Didn't do this.
This is not the first one. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
I have an answer for you on your last question. If you look at the UMS report, the very first column at the top that says cash. And then you look just to the left, it says month. June two thousand twenty five says we received thirty dollars of cash from patrons that we sent to collections. So that thirty dollars is inside GL four fifty, income lost and paid books. So thirty dollars of the one hundred eighty two dollars and twenty five cents came from patrons that were sent to collections. The remaining amount, if you take one eighty two point two five minus of thirty dollars would be income that we received from patrons that lost books but had not been sent.
The classes and logical engineers, should be having problems.
Okay. Did everybody go up Rose Lake today? Did everybody drive up Rose Lake? Like the curve? Did you? So I, so did you go along the way? Uh, yeah, sorry, here, we just put it, okay, I went the way, away from the way, way. Yeah, unless it's really pretty. It's all
Two fongs, two fongs. Pretty close, I had a break, two fongs.
Two bills. Do I not have a USB on here? Thank you.
No pressure, Megan, Megan wants.
You know what? It's all good. Don't get it. Side.
It's probably more earlier.
Because it's a paper laptop, and so, three bucks. Okay, yeah. Open, there we go. Not here. Now we need to project. And then you can just, should just be able to arrow through those.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. So again, good afternoon and welcome to Harrison. I'm honey supervisor. So now I would like to share some of our history for those of you who are unaware. This year, we celebrate the thirtieth anniversary of the Harrison Library consolidating with Community Library Network. So I have some fun facts for you. Harrison Library is the oldest library in Cootney County. It was established on July thirteenth, nineteen twelve. At that time, the library was only open five hours on Saturdays. And it showed, shared a building with the elementary school, because at that time, the population was about twelve hundred in Harrison. And the school building didn't have an effort. So, and the first book entered in the register was Oliver Twist. Another fun fact, in nineteen twenty five, the library moved into the city hall building and it had its own entrance. And then it wasn't until nineteen ninety five that we got our own building. So in nineteen ninety four, the Harrison residents voted to join the CLN. Land was leased from the Harrison Grange, and this original modular building was installed in the spring of nineteen ninety five. The second building over there was added in two thousand and seven. And then in twenty nineteen, the secure staff room was constructed and the windows were installed, making the library bright and inviting the way it is you see today. So now to the present, I'd like to introduce you to our two library specialists. Alicia has been with the district twelve years, tenant Harrison. And she is an exceptional readers advisory for older adults. She's also a master book tote packer, spine to spine, not edge to edge. I sometimes hear her mutter. Here she is showing off that she is fifty one James Patterson hardbook, hardback books tall. And if you knew how many James Patterson books we had, that is not even half. I am not as tall as she is. I think I'm more around forty four books tall, so. And then Emma has been with the district for three years, or five, counting her years as a volunteer. And she excels at children's book displays as well as readers advisory. As you can sense the theme here, that readers advisory is pretty important for us. And that's because Harrison has many voracious readers. Staff spent a good amount of time searching for books based on requested authors or genres, often recommending books based on their own reading and knowledge of the patron. Several patrons even have their own designated space on the bookshelf, like the young lady who just walked in and wanted two books for her and then for her husband. We had two books for her, but none for her husband, so, oh, oh, well, it happens sometimes. So when, when they are there, caregivers come to pick up. There's sometimes a large pile of books and they're like, we want ten, or we'll only take eight this week. And then they usually come back in another week or two for another pile. Sadly, our youth programmer Laura resigned at the end of March for family health reasons. She was much loved by all and her absence is felt to this day. Alicia and Emma filled in as needed for storytime until this summer, when district youth programmers started taking turns coming down here. And we are so grateful for them, both staff and patrons alike. We're very lucky. So let's talk programs and services. Kids and homeschool families enjoy storytime, which always evolves into steam playtime, as you can see by all the steam kits we have down below at their level. The laboratory programs are the most engaging that we offer, evidenced by the relative crowd we had for Art in Motion, which is the bottom photo there. Painting programs are very popular with the teens, and we always get a great turnout, except in the summer when they're all working, literally all. In terms of programs for adults, they do love their book clubs and they love their food. So combine the two and what do you get? Hookbook Club, which are hoping to start up in the fall. The inklings or writing group has taken to meeting outside when they are able, when it's not ninety five degrees outside. While our knitters have taken the summer off, they'll get back once the weather cools, making blankets, hats and other items for gift giving. Now we began offering book list bookmarks several years ago, based on the authors popular with our readers here. These are bookmarks with a chronological listing of the author's works for patrons to check off as they read, so they know where they are in the series. Who's at the top of that list? James Patterson and CJ Box. Additional services we offer are printing out daily crossword puzzles and word searches, along with coloring pages and fun educational activities for kids, all public domain and freely available. Every once in a while, one of our regulars comes in looking for the day's crossword and it hasn't been printed yet. So the Harrison Library partners with global nonprofits like the Crane Historical Society, which runs the Crane House Museum next door. All the historic photos you see on the walls here, as well as the gallery of former library managers we have on the center console there, provided courtesy of the historical society. In addition, the Harrison Library sells photo prints and calendars on behalf of the Crane House Museum, which is open seasonally on weekends. We work in collaboration with the city to hold programs in the park, the Jenks Family Concert next week, and also the Harrison Grange, when our activity spread out over the entire lawn, and on occasions when we've needed to rent out the fall grand or events. My staff and I worked hard to increase awareness of the community library network and what we offer. The Harrison Library and our Harrison Family Festival are featured in the annual city event and business listing that is mailed to homes throughout the region. The Harrison Family Festival is a much loved community event held every August. The library has a broad marketing strategy, which encompasses print, social media and word of mouth. Being a small town with spotty internet and a median age of fifty eight, flyers posted around town and on the bulletin board outside the library notify the community about all our activities. The city includes our event calendar and their monthly newsletter, and the Saint Mary's Gazette publishes our events in their Harrison column. And of course, there's our community Facebook page to stir up excitement about our special events, like squid dissection. We've had a good relationship with the Cootney Elementary School for many years. This year, I made a concerted effort to engage teachers by sending them flyers on library programs and services. This increased awareness led to the avid program coordinator, bringing her students to the library to learn about what we do and what we offer. At the end of the year, I sent information about our summer reading program and special events. Seeing children come out of the woodwork to enjoy reptile man, then come into the library to check out complimentary books was great. So follow the yellow straw road to the Harrison Library. Us follow through early spring of this year, our front entrance was under construction and patrons were directed to use the back door for a time. Staff reinstituted curbside delivery to make life easier for patrons. I can't tell you how many people told me they walked around the entire building just to get to the back entrance, even without rope light and signage. An unexpected benefit of this construction was the massive increase in overdrive usage. Patrons came in asking for help in installing Libby on their devices, brought their devices, and they were happy to know that they could add additional Idaho libraries. Come spring, the straw made it easier to navigate and see the entrance. Not to mention the local deer population loved it. Patrons were very excited and appreciative of the new walkway. Our thirtieth anniversary celebration also functioned as an open house to reintroduce the library to folks who maybe hadn't been here in a while. It was also a great opportunity to hand out summer activity booklets and sign up kids for summer reading. Harrison has many long time tours, some of whom only come for a weekend, others for six months. Recently, Bill, an annual summer visitor, requested help printing multiple documents during the week he was here. He graciously thanked us for our assistance each day he came in. On his last day, he wished us a good rest of our year and said he looked forward to seeing us next summer. And then there's Brian, who lives in Hawaii and he spends each summer here. Last year, he left us a goodbye note in an item returned in the book drop. And finally, while it's not unusual to get boxes of candy in the book drop, what is unusual are the sweatshirts we receive from an endearing older couple who moved out of state after decades of living here. They were so grateful for our help over the years and missed our book and movie recommendations. All of this is to say that Harrison Library is part of the community. We support our patrons and we make a difference. Thank you. And anybody answer any questions?
Is your picture on the wall yet?
No.
I get.
Any complaints on the new ramp?
Oh, they love it. Good. And the couriers especially love it.
Okay, this is my first time seeing it, yes, I is, I don't know, I just expected something like super wide and like
Well, yeah.
But yeah, so a little curve around and then, okay, but
Little switchback is fine, nope.
Little switchback, perfect. And the drainage and the
Yeah, as far as I can tell, it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no issues.
The geological engineers look at it or something, stop.
Yes, as far as we're aware.
I'm not sure that's what the straw was for, like, you know, so people could walk on it.
Straw was for all the mud and the slush and the snow.
Okay.
Yeah, so they put that on and then it's fine.
But I looked around back, it's like a lot of the hill has been excavated or maybe the top of it, did they dig a lot of that away and
They did.
Okay, so that's where they put the drainage lines and then they built a backup.
Yeah, I didn't know, go back.
That's part of the green.
No. Oh, yes, that is green sleeve land.
So we had access to that.
Thank you, honey. I think we're now supposed to be able to tour the library. We have a lot of fifteen minutes total between your presentation and touring. What do you want for touring? Five minutes, eight minutes? Because there's also a break for the down line here.
So much, yes.
I'd like to look.
I'll take ten minutes to finish touring library, come back. Very good, thank you. We'll reconvene at three o'clock. Yes, that's how you say it, for the tour and for the presentation. Next item up is the director's report, number eight on the agenda.
All right, this won't be too long, because a lot of the main points will pop in the budget. Just a few things, on the strategic plan, there was actually a little table package thing, basically our surveys. Today, we have seven hundred and eighty two responses, which is quite good. The, the actual, I looked back at the other one from the previous time, which was outsourced, and they had seven hundred and nine responses for And they had 709 responses for their survey. Information assessment gathering phase. And so we already. Now, I think their timeline might have been a bit shorter than ours, but in the end, we hope to. For me, if they were content with 709, then looking to push the limit as far as we can to get as many respondents to keep on the survey. So that's good. 782 to date. Survey focus group numbers haven't been spectacular at the smaller branches. You see them there. But we'll pivot for the smaller ones, like Spirit Lake, Rattler, and Apple only had, you can see the one attendee and two registered, one no show. So we'll pivot on that. I think if we maybe try more targeted approaches to it, working with the supervisor there, better timing perhaps. But we do have good registration for the bigger libraries, Hayden Lake and Hayden and and Post Falls have good registration numbers. And so hopefully do well with that. And the stakeholder conversations we've applied, repeated again, those are one-on-one conversations directly with the supervisor in the community, with the members of the community that are, have some stakeholders, whether that's, you know, school board or chamber of promise or whatever organizations would be in that specific community. So we're on target to get good results, good feedback, so that once the fall hits and we turn to analysis, we'll have a good body of data to work with. So. Obviously, the big news, next thing is the CIN. So yesterday, CIN dissolved. There's obviously going to be lots unpacked. Not too much to say right now. I mean, I just want to say for the record that, you know, the reason why CIN dissolved was because it was acting as a not properly structured entity since its founding. So it really doesn't have anything to do with what the media would like to suggest it has to do with. It basically was not established entity. It couldn't continue to operate as an entity in the state of Idaho all the way up structured. So that is the reason it was dissolved or needed to be dissolved. And so I will be putting out a press release. We're going to tomorrow just to try and address some of the confusion and misinformation that's out with community about, you know, the causal factor of this dissolution. But so, yeah, if you have any questions on that. So I'm just trying to make sure that people understand why it happened. Happen, the dissolution takes effect on September 30. And in that time, there's a lot that has to be unpacked. Basically, the CI, there's a website for the CIN. They're going to post on there certain practical things like when holes will stop. I think they said August 1st is when you can last be able to place a hole, renewals will be August 15. They just, we just need to figure out a way to make sure that all the items get back to where they belong before courier ends and it becomes more complicated for people to get those books back. So, so there's that piece. We, the CLN, as we've already put up a website, on our website, we have a link to a page where we will put our information for our patrons. Right now it just has a lot of, you know, come back soon. It has a few items in there where we've already created a portal where our patrons can go to get the information they need and that will be populated as we, as we learn more. So again, there's going to be a lot of stuff going on in the background, but you know, like I presented to you guys months ago, kind of when this, when this became a potentiality, a lot of the data about how this would affect us and it's sort of rolled into this new draft of the budget. But, but yeah, so courier is one aspect we're full and it's September 30. And then individual, because he's a, he's a third-party contract, individual libraries can keep them on in whatever capacity they need in order to get that last stripping of items to go to the right place. Overdrive was discussed a little bit and that was, as you remember, that was my biggest concern. For CLN, when I presented about the potential dissolution, a lot of things like courier and the ILS were kind of a wash for us. The amount of money that we put into CL, CIN would be the same amount of money that we would just do it to ourselves. But the one issue I was concerned about was overdrive because we put in $830,000 into overdrive over 10 years and I didn't want to start from scratch. So we do have confirmation from, from overdrive that they are commendable to split of the, of the content. They offered us the, offered CIN the ability to keep the contract, which goes to 2027, just to keep it the way it is, we would pay for that. CIN would continue to pay. They would make the payment in order to have it go to 27 and we wouldn't have to necessarily add more content. There is $12,654 of credit that could be added. And so, so we had a little bit of flexibility, but at the CIN meeting, the consensus was that a more immediate split was preferable. So rather than let it just sit idly for till 2027, the goal now is more along the lines of quickly find out how best the split can take place. And then the idea is that CLN will take its portion and CD, Portland Public will take its portion and also everyone else's portion, because Portland is the only other member that could actually support the fees to sustain the contract. So that was what was presented at the meeting. I mean, to me, that's a good thing. I'm a little concerned that someone had bandied about the idea of 50/50. To me, I'd have to see evidence that that was valid. I'm guessing it's more 70/30, 60/40, because I know what we spent, you know, 830,000. I doubt that all of the other members combined spent that amount. So we do need to find out just what that number is. Once we know what the equitable ratio is, then the selection team, one of which is Kerry, our tech services manager, and I think he was one at Portland, they would be looking at the overdrive content and seeing how easy to split it, right? There was some pushback on the idea that we would spend the time like picking titles versus some sort of randomized rhythm on overdrive charges to split it out. So we're just fine either way. I mean, if it's not too onerous to have a little bit of say what we want versus what we don't want, I think we pursue that. But right now it's just, it's obviously just yesterday. So from CLS perspective, we do have our technical services manager Kerry, who is part of the CIN selection team for overdrive and she'll be involved in looking at that collection and saying, how do we, if we have the ability to select items versus just a randomized split. But in the end, that one concern I had was that we'd be starting from scratch and it would cost us $1 million to get back up to a certain number of overdrive items. But in this case, we won't start from scratch. We'll start with a certain collection of overdrive. That will probably immediately enable us to solve this other issue, which people sometimes talk about in the public about that we've denied our miners' access to electronic resources, which isn't really true, just because we were in the CIN. But, but now that we're, now that we would only overdrive ourselves, we could look at that and, and bring to that collection the same, you know, professional assessment we take to restore our collection. And then again, we'd have the ability to open up access to our overdrive collection. It's hard to know whether, I know in places like Hoopla, in Hoopla you can divvy up like a kid's section and on kids' section. I've seen that. I'm not sure what overdrive capabilities there are and we were going to pursue that. When we first talked about it, when we were part of CIN, now it's just a little easier to pursue it more rapidly and that would just be our collection. So, so yeah, so that's overdrive. I think it's quite a positive thing in that regard. So I can speak more about CIN dissolution during the budget talks, but the fourth draft is all about that. So another point, another update, just hiring, we had a strong group of candidates for the collection development position. We had four first round interview, virtual interviews, some wrote a state. And then we had a second round with three onsite interviews and I think a decision will be made in the next couple of days. So positive about that. Any of that, that'll really help just looking more carefully at collections and that direction. Four staff have been established as the new adult programmers. So that's building out of the time I've brought you guys the different job descriptions. So, so four of the staff, so one at Post Falls, one at Hayden, Spirit Lake and Apple. Spirit Lake and Apple were people already there that were doing it and it was a pretty easy plug and play. There wasn't really anyone interested in doing the adult programming at Post Falls, but there were two at Hayden. So one of them is going to move to Post Falls to do it. So, so that's a place, but there's still some challenges, Wrath from Harrison and Pinehurst. We have external postings out there right now. Harrison will be a bit challenging, just and the geography and getting someone that will come and do that position of the number of hours that we're looking at. So, so there's a little bit of challenge still. We have to fill Wrath from Harrison and Pinehurst for adult programmers. And actually, the children's programmer at Harrison as well, of course. So there are some challenges there, which we definitely want to look at. There is a new organizational chart. I'll send it to the board. I don't know if it's on the website or not. It's on our, it's on our back room, like our workroom for the staff. But I'll send it. It's a new chart. It's basically had a double different purposes. One was to, to well, one was to help with sort of the organizational culture and create a more direct line between the governance side. And she's, so it's the director as a direct supervisor over, over the branch supervisors. And, and also it had to do with the assistant director, who can't say enough how much I value her. And there was a question of giving her the chance to pursue what she really wants to do in her career. So she has certain departments that she's going to be looking at, that department title. So you'll, you'll see the chart, but I'll send it out to you. So that also happened. Otherwise, a lot of work in the last, this last meeting was budgetary. So that's the end of my. Yes.
And two questions. One, the adult programmer for Harrison, are you looking for like a person for just that position or a roving for the other?
Well, there was, yeah, so we, it was tough. Right now, I think the position that's posed, there's a posted position and the idea was the person would work at Pinehurst. It's always a challenge of the market, like, on one hand, you think if we could give someone full-time position with benefits, it would be really attractive and that would bring in a better pool. But then sometimes that doesn't work. Sometimes a person is actually looking for only part-time or something small, right? So, so right now that was one approach we were taking was to see, because we, because it just so happened, it was, it was a resignation in pot, so the person at Pinehurst lab originally was just Harrison that was on the table. And it all played out in different ways, but bottom line is right now we were looking at a Harrison combo with Pinehurst, but I'm not sure that's going to fly. So we're going to take a step back and look at that again and see how best to, to. I spoke with Honor earlier today and I just, we need to look more, I think probably more specifically at each community and say how best to fill the position. And the one unique part about Harrison is it's actually both children's and adult that we need here. Whereas the other ones are just adult. We have our children's programmers in the other branches already. But most of this work had been about adult, establishing an adult program team. And so we needed an adult programmer at Wrath from, and we still need one in Pinehurst. But here we need both. So we're just looking at different, it's just a combination of finding what's the best fit for the local library, what's the best for the institution, plus what's the market? But like, who are we going to attract if we're only offering, say, 19 and a half hours or 20 hours benefits, no benefits and part-time? So that's kind of where we're at. We're trying to assess the market, see how best to attract, you know, some to this position.
Just a plus.
On the overdrive situation, 830,000 are we spent, standard fee, the books that we bought. Is that right? Over the years, over 10 years?
Electronic.
Electronic, yeah, yeah.
Well, overdrive would include more than books. It would be audio and ebooks.
Okay, but what I'm wondering, is there another fee that CIN paid? Maybe you've explained it or you'll do it later, but it was only CIN that allowed them to be viewed over the internet or web connection or something. Is, is there, or is each library offering the, the overdrive now going to have to buy additional software? It used to be only CIN had to do it once.
Yes, so I mean, so there was a fee, okay, there's the, the fee for the actual service. This was a contract. So we entered into a contract for overdrive. That contract was a $10,000 contract fee annually. And a 10,000, there was a $10,000 like credit, which you could buy stuff with. But it, but then above and beyond that, every library was able to contribute. Right? So there's the membership fees, which actually, I think, I think it was mostly just Portland and CLN that paid that 10, 5 and 5. And then there weren't many libraries who had a broken out amount that they would contribute. I think Wes Bonner had recently had a $3,000 that they, they said they would commit to contribute. But apart from that, like we contributed 100,000 one year, maybe 75,000. We contributed massive amount. And I don't, I can't remember what Portland Lane's numbers were, but it wasn't, it was half that, but, but maybe. They contributed amount as well. So that's the amount I'm talking about. It, that 830,000 is what we contributed over and above fees for licensing fees for use. Like, it's not the fees for overdrive itself. It's what you contribute to get more material into the collection. So I think there's about 30,000 items in the collection. I think it was like 18,000 ebooks and something like, for a report. The split between what ebooks and audiobooks. So that total number, right, was achieved over X number of years by people contributing. Apart from the, the basic 10,000 that you get as a credit at, at overdrive to kick off the year kind of thing. So.
So what I'm asking is, is there another fee to make the system work like a?
Yeah, that's a system operation. That's the annual $10,000. That is, that's the annual, which would, and this is why at the meeting, the solution was to break it between CDA, CDA and CLN, because we were the only ones that were. The other libraries wouldn't be able to pay that fee of overdrive. So I have no idea what the future plans for any other library members, members are of CIN. But at the meeting, they had presented the idea that CDA would be one part of the distribution and CLN would be the other. And the only other thing I need to worry about is that it shouldn't be 50/50 unless they can show that everybody else contributed that same kind of number we contributed. And I just want to be able to walk away from this dissolution with a good amount of overdrive collection, so we can build on that for our visions.
But overdrive isn't going to make C, CLN pay the 10,000 and another library pay the 10,000. Every library isn't going to pay 10,000.
Well, every library would have to enter into their own individual contract.
And they'll.
And it would be probably based on the content. We might end up having to pay five or 8,000. Like, I don't know whether it'd be a $10,000 fee for us if our collection is out of the size. I'm not sure what that, but there will be an annual contract fee to overdrive, which every library that wanted to keep any of it would have to pay. I just don't know whether it's the same, right? It's probably based on size. It, it would be, well, it's not based on size of collection. Usually the EVS companies will base it on size of population, right? It would be like, how big of a population do you serve? Therefore, they think that that's the metric for them to decide how much of their material they should charge you for because of how many people can access. That's why these EVS companies are very covetous of their password. Like, I can't be, my brother calls me up in different states. Hey, can you give me your library barcode so I can get into your overdrive? The whole rule here is that they're supposed to be providing electronic resources for a specific, you know, group of people who belong to the library. So there's just, yeah, there's some of those things that would need to be worked out. It wouldn't be too much different for us because we'd already been paying the membership fee, same courtway.
Any other questions for the director? Thank you, sir. Onto the next time on the agenda, which is the, I guess it's an important one, right? Harrison Library lease agreement expiring at the end of November, I believe, of this year. After 20 years, I believe it is. Everyone got a copy of the current lease agreement and the new one. My, my question for the director, does counsel review the lease agreement?
So, sorry. So, yeah, I just briefly, I passed them when I first got it. I passed it on to Deagle. He did respond. He said that he does, he thinks it needs revision a little bit about some things. But his biggest issue, which I think he would just need to decide so that he would know his direction to go, was the difference on the 2005 agreement. There was, a renewal was allowed for 20 years. It was a 20, because the first one was a 20-year lease and then in there it talks about the potential for a renewal. But the new one that's being presented is a 10-year. So if he knew. Twenty years. Uh, but the new one that's being, um, presented is a ten-year, right? So if he knew that you guys were fine with going from twenty ten. Then he wouldn't worry about that part of it, but there are some other factors in there which he didn't really specify, but there were a few things in there unrelated to. The amount or the time, but more related to what a public entity can, um, can promise in a lease. Uh, government entity versus private and stuff like that. So there were some things in that which. He didn't move on because it had to come here first. But the only immediate question that he asked me to bring to the table was if we're okay with switching from. The fact that the current lease that's going out said. The renewal will be twenty, which is the one we presented, which is a ten-year or ten-year lease, so, yeah. Let's, so for example, if you said, no, no, we, we want to lock in a twenty, then we go back. To the Grange and say we need to revise that part of the lease. But if we're buying the ten-year, then he wouldn't. Turn himself for that, so.
No, don't do anything, fifty, uh, Robin, thank you.
Uh, I, I kind of figured that the twenty years initially was because to move a building on here. You know, I take twenty years for it to be worth it. That's already here. So I'm, I'm good with the ten years. Now, whatever you guys think is best.
Yeah, okay. And I was also wondering, what is the useful terms of lifespan of a modular building or two buildings? I figure the dates were. And then when I just wrote down in the presentation, nineteen ninety-five for one of these structures. So. As long as the structure and the land does not let the structure, whatever you want to call it, so. Maybe ten years is a good idea. I don't know. I think it's to have a renewable ability after ten years. I think it did. Also, a kind of a little bit interesting too, the, uh. Original lease was for fifteen hundred dollars, well, a year rather, allowed for a three percent increase every year. If I calculated correctly, um. It really came out, jumping from the twenty years ago, it was really an eight point seven five percent increase, leaving from what it was back twenty years ago. What it's going to be now, which is eight thousand something, seven dollars. So is it, is there, did counsel have a question regarding? Whether we just desire to be a longer lease? Yeah, I think he, I think he would, if, if, if the board felt that there was, that they were discontent with the change in the term length. Then he would work with the lease documents and address that. If he worked with the Grange to say we need to revise this part of it. There are other parts of it. He didn't really get into details, meaning like saying which are unrelated to that, or, but, I mean, they don't want like they have to be done. Because they, they were speaking in a certain way which doesn't apply to. So government entities or, so that wasn't a question he was posing and he didn't get into detail with me, but. They get like, after here, we'll go to council. And all he would need to know is whether or not he needs to pursue the board's interest. In saying it should stay at twenty, or if we're okay with ten, then that's fine with him too. He didn't care either way. He was just. Absolutely.
Does anyone have any discussion regarding the duration of the lease or otherwise on your, trusty plus?
Maybe I missed a book. What are, what are we actually paying for this year, the last year?
Fifteen, oh, no, no.
Oh, he's higher, he's still.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah.
What's the actual amount, the most recent payment was?
If you look at the. If we look at the, um. Paperwork that in the balance sheet and the income statement, you can see. The lease amount. It's under G L eight eight five. And then in the narrative, I address that. So the annual payment has been one thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents under the current contract. Which expires eleven to twenty-five.
So we went.
We only raised a hundred dollars, I guess, over twenty years.
It was an amazing deal because if you take sixteen thirty-seven divided by twelve, it was about a hundred dollars a month. You know, just over a hundred dollars a month. It was an amazing deal. And so now at eight thousand seven dollars per year. The first five years of the lease term, um, we would end up paying. Have it in the gallery, because I knew you'd asked me this question. So it would be six hundred sixty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents per month. From two thousand twenty-five through two thousand thirty. And then in the lease contract, it says it will increase by three percent per year for the remaining five years. So by the end of the ten-year contract, we will be paying seven hundred seventy-four dollars and thirty-six cents a month. So we'll go up about ninety dollars a month by the end of ten years. So we'll start at eight thousand seven per year. And by the end of ten years, we'll be paying nine thousand two hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-one cents per year.
And. Trusty Robinson.
So if this, um, contract was extended to twenty years again instead of ten, uh, how? And in ten or eleven years, we wanted to actually end it. Would there be some sort of penalty or? We not be able to?
Well, the current one, if I transcratically is expiring in November. This is a, basically a new contract for ten additional years, right?
No, I know, but if we, if, if we changed the new one for twenty years, but in ten years or, or five years or whatever, no, past ten. If, in fourteen years. We got new property here and that building was donated to us. Um, how, I wouldn't assume there would be some big penalty because the rent already is low, so I can't imagine it'd be a big penalty of breaking the contract.
Is, is that the kind of thing where you speak with the Grange or is? Counsel speak with the Grange to ask at least if we ask for a twenty-year contract, do we have any? Billy's a terminate at a lesser date, but, but at least ten years? I don't know. Is that what you were asking? Can we go for a minimum of ten years, but have an option to go twenty?
No, just saying, if it was twenty and we wanted to terminate it at, say, twelve, what the penalty would be. But like I said, with these terms, it's so, the, the rent's still low. Uh, I can't imagine a penalty being.
There's probably a turn change that's already addressed.
Change of terms, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, future conversa, I mean. Future conversations would end up being myself probably, or actually it would be Lindsay and Randy. Or meeting with the Grange, like it just depends on, you know. What it is we, chances are we're going to be so much as a draft, but, but legal would work out. These are the changes we'd be interested in. That, so. I think for the board, it's more a question of, you know. We, do we acknowledge that, you know, twenty years ago, the, the set rate was. Reasonable or obviously deal, but, but on the other hand, twenty years later. You know. Changing from one to eight. To me, it doesn't sound like. The changes in twenty years were quite significant, right? In the cost of, of things, right? Cost of, you know, state costs of. So it doesn't seem to be, uh, it's too, too bold and ask on the Grange's part after twenty years. So it's usually more a question of, is there anything, anything in this lease which is glaring to the board that say, hey? We don't want to pursue this, right? I don't see anything like that. So it's more a question of, you know, yes, let's bump it to legal. Legal will look at all the fine print. Make sure everything's good for us, right? The only thing I think you guys would probably be concerned about would be, you know. Do we want to lock in twenty? I, I, I don't know if it's. That big a deal. I mean, I, I, I think I, I can try and get, um, data as far as the build, the lifespan of the building. That might play into our concerns, but it's like ten years from now, twenty years.
I'm comfortable firstly with ten years. I mean, so. If, if the town really wants a library, they're going to let us rent it again in ten years from now, so. Just because it was twenty, as trustee Addison said, maybe it was twenty the first round also to justify purchasing and hauling on and setting up. Uh, modular structures here to support it. So, uh, you, you don't want a five-year lease when you throw a lot of money in to start with, so. My thought is I'm okay with ten personally. I don't, resident board, where's trustee plus? Go ahead.
So I didn't really get my question answered, or maybe I didn't answer it, ask it right. It looks like the previous term was fifteen hundred per year, but they didn't have a. Writer in there where it can increase three percent.
Yeah, so they can increase three percent per year, I think, from the, the, I think that's what I read last night.
That's the new one.
Those people, it was the old.
No, it's the old one.
That's the old one.
So how did we only get to sixteen?
Because they didn't exercise their right to increase it all three percent every year, my guess.
But that's the.
It only went up a hundred dollars.
That's the main part of my question is where did this eight thousand come from?
It's in the contract.
Yeah, well, I know it is, but I'd say how did they arrive at this?
Or, yeah, I don't know. It's, it's ground rent, I guess, we're renting property.
Has anyone looked into that? It's just fair prices.
Uh, well, I haven't yet. I mean, it's something you can do. Uh, it, to me, it seemed like it was, you know, it's still a deal twenty years on, so. Uh, if, if, if we need, if we need data to back up that. To me, it was more an obvious thing that didn't require the data, but yeah, if, if we want data to show that eight thousand. Is a real, or seven hundred.
I, I don't think it's, it's worse staff time slot and search properties right here, because even if they find a bargain down the street. You're going to move this whole operation.
Understand. Can we ask the Grange, how did you come up with that number? That's what I'm saying.
Now, trustee, I'm going to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Do you, do we know why it is that they've decided to change it from twenty to ten?
Uh, and speaking with, like, the point of contact is, is our facilities person, Randy. He didn't. I think originally in the early talks, they were trying to set a number. And I think, I think there was, you talk of five, five, ten kind of thing, and. And they, they, I don't think twenty was on the table then. So I think we, when we talked about it, we kind of, well, that's, you know, we don't want five. So, so they set up ten of it. So there was a conversation between Randy, I think, and, and the Grange before they even drafted it. As to what length. Um. I don't know. I don't know the answers to why they'd be hesitant to go twenty. It'd be, I think they obviously have that building there, so maybe there's things. That. Uh, I, I, I'll be the part now.
Concerning privacy.
That we pay also covers any kind of property tax that goes along with this actual piece of property. Yeah, so that would be one reason it would go up that much. Um, I, I think maybe we should. I could be off on this, but. Maybe get a consensus if we want the director to actually ask them how they came up with that number. Maybe it doesn't matter if that's asked, but I think maybe we should get a consensus of it.
Trusty plus.
I think we, we are obligated to do due diligence instead of just. Taking what's been given. So I think there should be a little bit of checking. Maybe we ask a local real estate agent or somebody we work with. That I'm, I'm looking for due diligence instead of just blindly accepting something.
Okay, I thought, I thought I heard once, and maybe it was a meeting here or somewhere that. Sites, I don't know what you want to do out here, but I don't know that for a fact. You're going to, sorry, tell you anything else.
I, I mean, I don't, I don't think we're here to say yes or no to the lease. I'd say like, this is just the first time you're seeing it, right? I think we have until. Well, the new one, I think, is October first, even though the old one is November second, so we have time. I think by the next meeting, I can, we can come back and I could have that data, or the eight thousand is its market value kind of thing. Um, I think the relationship with the Grange has been very, I don't know, take it back, maybe ask them. Their reasoning behind this going from point to ten. So it's, I think it's been a good relationship over the years, so I don't foresee any ups there. Um, yeah, it wasn't, the intention wasn't that, that you make a decision on this side. It's more a question of, here's the lease that you've been, you've shown. Um, legal has looked at it. There's things that he's prepared to, to revise, which would end up being a discussion between him and the Grange. Um, his only question was, does, do you want him to pursue, right? From, from the legal perspective, do you want him to pursue the twenty versus ten, right? Obviously, the feedback I'm getting is over the next meeting, I'm bringing some data about how that eight thousand sits. And then perhaps, is there something we should know about ten versus twenty, just so we can be prepared? And I think that could be the next meeting.
I'm okay if that's, that's okay with the board. Yeah, all right. You got that. Yeah. So we finished the Harrison Library lease. Scheduled for a ten-minute break in order to be ready to talk about certain things like the budget for next year. So it's now almost three forty, so we can read it three fifty. Had, was. So in terms of the director, assistant director, business manager. Enlightening us and explaining a lot of the things on here because, um, that, that, it helped me a lot. And, and when I say that, I went back. Was looking forward to it. I watched the entire meeting over again, um, so, um, I didn't fall asleep, but I got through it and I, I learned a few more things in there when I went back through that again. Uh, and also understanding how the ICROM funds are being shifted around in there to, to make the budget work different manners there. And looking at the, even the five-year plan, I knew what it was, uh, spreading out what would the impact would be. Um, and I also learned that the staff compensation was untouchable. So, and then anyway, and then going to the, uh. The budget discussion now, we got the curve ball thrown at us yesterday, and C I N was going to dissolve. In the future, so that's how, I guess it was a scramble on behind the scenes here to give us. The FY twenty-six budget, the fourth track. So I don't know at this point, we just toss it back and you explain all some of the differences in there as a director? Uh, or how we want to go about the next.
Yeah, I mean, it might be best if I just kind of point out some, point out some things. Again, I wouldn't say it was a total, um, scramble. This, obviously you know that we were aware of the sand might dis, that's why I had all that prep work ahead of time, so. So, I mean, it was a, a long day for sure. I'm trying to get it out, but, uh. But a lot of this stuff has been circulating in our minds because we knew it was a potentiality. So, uh, obviously there's a big difference here, but I'm showing, uh. The, I'm comparing the second draft to the fourth draft, so, because the third draft that came out in the packet for this meeting becomes almost pretty irrelevant. So I'm going back to the second draft, comparing it to what, what we're showing now. So that's that. Um, the sheet and then, and then there's the column on the end, which is the savings and the additions. Showing the changes from second and fourth draft. So. Uh, I'll just run through, say the things I feel I should say, and then we can go from there. Obviously, the revenue is all the same, so. We'll skip that. Um, I was tasked, uh, with sort of looking more carefully at the, um. The salary line, right? Uh, not so much getting. Um. See, Hamley suggested, for me, it's a non, like, I, I really want to stress the value of the human resources of the institution and I'm going to place that value. Uh, through the, the cola and the, the step, you know, to my, to my staff. So to me, that's, that's where I'm starting from.
Can I, I have one group of, yeah. So did we drop a position? Just, I'm, I'm looking over, do we abolish a position? It looks like between. The salary going down in this latest version, Percy going down, all of that.
Yeah.
I just wondering what, what caused a decrease in that whole chunk of, of the.
So we worked hard to, to, to get that eighty-eight thousand dollars savings, um. And it's not as simple, like, yes, one person wasn't replaced kind of thing. It's more complicated that, that really the easiest way is. A lot of it has to do with in, valuing in, in internal staff member. And then changing or expanding their position without having to get an external candidate. And so I. There are some things that are still in the works. But, um, so I don't want to say too much about that, but, but most of the stuff that's going on behind the scenes there is, um. Related to internal changes, right? And what I can say is like, for example. Part of this is, is that we're going to have to do our own courier. So rather than putting in a number for external brand-new courier, which would have made more money. We're looking at positions we have and, and, and things that we do and whether or not we can absorb courier into that. So. The, the cost for courier as an example, and I don't really want to jump around too much, but the cost for courier was. Um, forty-seven thousand or something like that, uh, with a C I N for fifty-one thousand, right? So the cost for courier that we were paying the C I N as of, like, yesterday, or before.
That was eight, eight thirty.
Yeah, it was sort of, it was fifty-one thousand a year, um, G L E thirty. We didn't need to transfer that full fifty-one thousand up into the salary line, right? We divvied that out in such a way where it's not costing us that amount. To get a courier as an internal staffer. So, so that's just an example of the workings that we did in the, um. In the G L five hundred to five twenty-five, the, the salary, the, the bundle there.
Okay, thank you. And I mean, it's slowly now.
No, that's why, that's, that's a big chunk. I mean, that, that's a big chunk, right? So, um, we can speak more about that, but basically our. Ability to, um. To drop sixty-nine thousand dollars in G L five hundred and then eighty-eight thousand four twenty-three overall in that section. Has to do with internal structure, um, where how we deploy our employees, uh, to get the job. So, so that's what's happening there. So so that's what's happening there. Um, I will say that I I did drop. And this is another important point, right? I'm going from fifty thousand down to thirty thousand for youth programs.
Six oh five.
Yeah, so six oh five. Now, I know those conversations about what's what's the purpose, what's the value, what what's programming all about? And that's a discussion that we can certainly have. The discussion when it comes to the budget is that it's not a reflective number of what's actually spent. And I mentioned that last time, right? The projected year ends for programming will be sixty five thousand, seventy thousand, right? It's gonna go way over thirty thousand. And before you wouldn't have known what that meant because it was. Forty five thousand dollars coming in as grants and then forty five thousand dollars going out as grants. And you think, oh. We're running youth programs with thirty thousand dollars. So if someone in the public says, you know, why you guys doing programs? How much should I spend on programs? You say, oh, well, we want to spend thirty thousand. That's not true. Right? So it's really important that, and so I'm having this conversation with you. And then I might have to turn and have a conversation with my programming staff. Because hey, you were going, you were pitching fifty, and now you're pitching thirty, you're you're devaluing, right? And I'm not. It's not really about that. It's about understanding how programming is funded, right? So to me, it didn't really matter. I I was trying, when I gave you the fifty in draft two, I was trying to show you a more reasonable action. A more reasonable action. In this case, I'm dropping it to thirty because I can, but that doesn't mean you should expect. That your projected year end for youth programming is going to hit sixty thousand. And this is why last time I mentioned, listen, whatever we settle on here. The more important thing for programming is that a year from now, I'm able to present to you like real data about what we did, what it cost, right? And I know there's a bigger conversation about philosophy and and libraries and programming, and that's fine. But for the budget discussion. That's where I'm basically skimming twenty thousand, right? Skimming uh, twenty two thousand by going back. Of draft two to draft four in programs. Anyway, moving down, I wanted to get our collection numbers good. We had been spending three hundred and five thousand dollars on our collection in fiscal year twenty five. And in draft two, I only had two hundred and forty thousand in physical and fifty thousand electronic. So I bumped collections back up to two fifty five. And I just want you to realize that in fiscal year twenty five, three hundred and five thousand was spent on collections. But a hundred thousand was spent on electronic, which means book budget was actually only two hundred and five. So I'm proposing fifty thousand dollars more for books. Okay, just so that we see that like that. That's why it's really important for certainly for the finance department, uh, for 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 the admin. Administration here to be able to present to you very clear and transparent stuff what's going on here. So so. If we if we get a really good selection of overdrive, like we have, we have a good base to build on, we'll be able to put fifty thousand a year. Right into overdrive or whether we want to add Cooper or something, we'll put that in, but we still have maintained what we had been spending on books, actually more. Because we spent two hundred and five thousand a year for, we're going to be at two hundred and fifty five thousand on collection. So that's what's happening there. Couple of I won't believe everything, a couple of little adjustments marketing. Uh, next big item is um, six twenty five. Software going from going from one oh five to one forty seven. That's very simply explained that the C I N. Dues eight twenty five was forty thousand dollars. That's just being transferred out. So the dues that we had paid to C I M. Paid for Coho, the I L S paid for Envisionware, paid for all these electronic softwares that we use. That number is just going up into the software line. So and I presented this before when I showed the C I N packet earlier, a lot of the things are a wash. Right? We paid just as much to C I N to accomplish this that we're going to be paying internally to accomplish it. So. That's the change on the software line, an extra forty two thousand. I'll skip some of the two thousand dollar numbers. That's not a big deal. Okay, so now we get into the seven hundreds. Seven oh five was eighty eight thousand dollars. I kind of pushed for ninety two, three, twelve in the second draft. But we thought it would be better if we broke it out. So it used to say library equipment under twenty five thousand. So under twenty five hundred, but it never specified what that was. And so we actually broke it out because some of its facilities, some of its I T and some of its admin. So I T is the biggest chunk of that. They get about they they of the eighty eight thousand in the past, they were spending the most of that. And this would be Mark, my I T guy, you know, if he needs um, computers and stuff like that. So under twenty five hundred. So so we broke it out. So it's it's not ninety two thousand dollars in draft two going down to fifteen. It's ninety two thousand, three, twelve going down to uh. There you go. That's why I have. Okay, eighty thousand, right? So there's a there's a there's a savings there of twelve thousand, three, twelve in that bundle. It's it doesn't necessarily just follow across the line, right? So it's that seven oh five, seven oh six and seven oh seven. But seven oh six and seven oh seven didn't exist before. So it's just being broken out.
Makes more sense.
Uh, just moving down a little bit, this again has to do with C I N. We broke out so vehicle, fleet, maintenance and fuel. Uh, was twenty four, we dropped it to eighteen. And then there's such a thing as employee mileage reimbursement. So we have a bunch of cars. We have car, two vans, a truck. Uh, and we have um, Randy's assistant has a Nissan. Big thing, uh, I don't know what they're called. And so we have a hand that's a fleet. We have that fleet and this is the what it costs us to maintain it and fuel it. If a staff person drives, like for example, if I drive down to Harrison, right, and I want to get reimbursed. I use my own car, that's that other line. So the reimbursement, employee seven ten, employee reimbursement. So the twenty four thousand. Right? Is a an addition of six because we added eighteen and twelve. That twenty program broken out, it's. Now, the courier is a bit different because that ten thousand in fiscal year twenty five was. Fuel and maintenance of the Sprinter, the diesel uh, Dodge Sprinter van uh, van. Which had different maintenance and different fuel issues. So that's kind of going away. Uh, but the thirteen thousand dollars is what it'll cost us to, and we wanted to keep this separate, maintain and fuel the courier. So you know, back down below, it's fifty one thousand dollars we're going to pay. So fifty one thousand dollars minus the thirteen thousand. That's going to go to maintaining the vehicle. And then the remainder would have gone to paying a human being to be the courier, right? So so that's how that's broken out. So that money is actually coming from another location. But so seven fifteen is the courier maintenance and fuel. There's a very good chance that we don't keep the Sprinter. Uh, just like we were working on. Supposing it's not a great term, but the the bus, the very large, the partic- articulated bus and the other bus. So the Sprinter is part of the fleet, which my facilities, uh, Randy doesn't feel is. Is as useful. We we're just looking at, we're gonna start assessing this now because what does. What does courier look like for us internally when we're visiting seven branches? Like the biggest discussion since I came with C I N was, oh, our courier can't fit everything. They need to bigger vehicle. To me, a Sprinter diesel is a bit of overkill, right? Full height, there's no. Those are little bins over there, little black bin with, I think that's how we transfer our books. You could probably fit a hundred in a Sprinter, right? Would you? We never need that. So we're looking at the other fleet items like the van. We have two mini vans as being the primary. For your vehicles that we're going to use. So so I'm just mentioning that so that it used to be the ten thousand used to maintain the Sprinter. That probably won't be part of the fleet, but the thirteen thousand is going to be the fuel and maintenance of the courier vehicle.
The seven fifteen was exclusively Sprinter for.
Seven fifteen, yes, yeah. It was it was what it took to, because because the Sprinter had been used for lobby stop. Which is an outreach program where we we take items and it had a lift and you could drop down, take up the books out on truck to to senior senior homes and and. And places like that. So.
Aren't we still doing that?
Uh, well, that is a conversation that works into some of the internal changes I'm talking about. But if 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 we were to select a minivan to do the courier job, how do we absorb? Some service like Lobby Stop using that vehicle instead, right? It's a discussion that's being. That we're fleshing out, how best to do career. I think it's very exciting, to be honest. Um, the kind of service we could provide just seven libraries. Versus all the headaches we've had with courier in C I N, just in the time I've been here, right, trying to figure it out. So. So that's all going on behind the scenes. I'm not going to mention seven nineteen just yet. Or seven sixty four. Yeah, I know. So so we're. So we're gonna drop down to set uh, to eight eighty five. Eight eighty five. Yeah, okay, so eight eighty five is the idea that the that the district leases the building. And so that ties into utilities for the district and um, the other one I skipped, which is. Uh, seven nineteen repairs maintenance district. Okay. So what am I talking about here? And this is obviously total change from before, but but. And I've talked about this before and I got a bunch of data, but I'll just throw it out there off my head. So we are no longer part of C I N. And our patrons, as I showed before, borrow, and I know there's a lot of talk about, oh, they're gonna miss everything, blah, blah, blah. It not really, not really good data. They borrowed twenty seven thousand items or so. Um, they borrowed twenty seven, I'll just go, or twenty seven thousand items or so in that year that I sampled for you.
C L N from the C S, C I N from the C I N.
C L N patrons from C I, because people will say, oh, we've lost access to this big collection. Fine. C L N was half the size of C I N, right? Roughly. And then all the other members of C I N was another half of that collection. But then when I showed you the data before, we never borrowed all that. We borrowed twenty seven thousand. And eighteen thou, yes.
Yearly?
Yeah, they're not in the annual sample I gave. I.
Okay.
I can't remember whether it was twenty three. It was um. It was this packet I gave at a previous meeting.
Okay.
Right? And in that packet, I had a page which showed uh, that, right? And I also broke down the top sixty items that borrowed, right? Okay, to me, this is the data I need to understand because it's not fair for the public to say. You have denied us access to this massive collection because honestly, it was never borrowed. They borrowed twenty six thousand, three hundred and ninety two items in twenty twenty four. And then I broke that down. Eighteen thousand, four hundred items were borrowed once. And then the biggest item, twenty, there were twenty three borrows, certs of the DVD, seventeen of Gran Turismo. And then five items were borrowed sixteen times. And then I just went down and down until I got to eighteen. The biggest chunk was eighteen thousand items borrowed one time. Four thousand, eight hundred items were borrowed two times, right? And then I looked, dig deeper and I think, what are those items, right? And the top sixty items that I presented to see, like the number one, eighty, eighty two items were Berenstain Veris titles. Right? A hundred and forty six circulations of Berenstain Veris titles. And I presented, at the time, I told you that this is nice, this is because it's a little sample, but it's not the whole story. Because the bottom line is, we probably have those Berenstain Veris titles. But the way that the way that reserves get filled, like today, the person here brought these books and said, these all, these books all came from somewhere else. And obviously, they did. But doesn't mean we don't have them. It means that they were filled faster in the courier and I'll and and the reserve system in Coho. So in order to get a real sample, I need a little bit more time. This is what I, this is why I have a website now to show this. I'm gonna get that data up there. So people realize that we actually have it. It just got filled faster by another library. But then that's just going to speak to how good our courier is going to be and how we're going to handle it, right? So.
It got filled faster because it was already checked out.
Yeah, or just whoever saw it first in the in the in the I L S, right? Whoever clicks the button first to fill it. Like the like the 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 reserves come into the I L S and then the front desk staff will see it. And if it happens to be seen at Liberty Lake and they have it, they fill. Like, I mean, there's things on here which we obviously have. We have the Berenstain.
It was, it wasn't that it was not, that it was already checked out. It's C L N.
Well, it could have been, but I'm not, yeah, I'm talking about.
Could have been at C L N and they just didn't.
Could have been on the shelf and they fill it first. I think it could be. Yeah, I think it could be. It's just timing of it. I mean, the more likely scenario is it's out. Right? It's just timing because it's like the the it it, someone puts the reserve in the I L S at three oh two.
So we need more copies, maybe.
So so this is the assessment we need to make. We need to look at our collection and say, do we need more copies of something? Are we missing something? And then and and the homeschoolers, we love homeschoolers, we're all supportive. If they were just to say that, oh, we're gonna miss so much, give me the list. Give me fifty, the fifty items you want, we'll buy. So I don't think there's that much concern. There's obviously, there's a lot of concern for other other members of C I N. They have a lot to think about. We carry the lion's share of that towards important years. We can create a really great district system. Which our taxpayers will love. To me, there's no doubt that's possible, but I need just, I need more time to look at all this stuff. But to speak to the budget. So even if I take the numbers as they are and present this idea that there are twenty, let's just say for roughly. Uh, twenty five, we need to expand our collection by twenty five thousand items. Some we duplicate it because we need to push more stuff around. So if we need to expand our collection by twenty five thousand items. Uh, as just as, just as an example. The collection size of Spirit Lake is seventeen thousand, four hundred and thirty seven. Right? So we're basically saying we need space equivalent to one of our branches. In order to meet this potential need, if the data comes back in that ballpark, we need all of a sudden. To be able to turn to our patrons and say, you know what? It's unfortunate. C I N was an illegal, for lack of a better term, institution, couldn't couldn't continue. Terrible, I'm sorry, but hey. Our taxpayers are going to be serviced with a fantastic library. And if you need twenty five thousand more items to do it, we can do it. And here's how. The easiest way to do it is to have the district move out of where it is. Into a cheap, not so cheap, but I'll qualify that, into a office space. So that we can give back to Hayden its full square footage. And we give back to Post Falls, it's full square footage. Because because district staff are in Hayden, I, technical services and programmers. And then this isn't direct directive communications, we're all in Post Falls. And so we eat up uh, eight hundred and two square feet of Post Falls and we eat up three thousand, three hundred and fifty eight square feet of Hayden. And just for a point of reference, Spirit Lake is three thousand, sixty eight square feet. So if we can get out of Hayden. We're basically, without having to build anything, adding a whole branch to the system. And I know before I got here, there was talk of, you know, one day putting a library up on the prairie in Rathdrum with an admin building on it. And a whole new branch to handle the growth. And that's great, but I can tell you right now, the cost of building a library. Versus the cost of an administrative stat, like an office building, completely different animals. The cost of building an actual library, like a, like a real library with with, you know, engineering weight issues for book collections. And just what you need to do and it should be beautiful, right? Architecturally beautiful, right? That's what libraries should be. So to do that. Is uh, small towns can be more, can be, but no, but they they should be attractive and beautiful spaces. So to to. To do that is very, very expensive. But a real easy fix right out of the gate. Is for a district to get out of the two separate locations it's in. But if I have to have a meeting, now that I'm um, the way the structure, if I need to go meet programming. I'm driving Post Falls to Hayden, right? And if I gotta have a meeting in the afternoon with my assistant director, I'm driving back to Post Falls. I can't go on the intercom and say, everyone to the meeting room now, because we're not all together, right? District is spread out.
So nothing's misconstrued by the public. Administration getting out of those two facilities.
Yeah, yeah.
Not closing the libraries. Incorrectly.
No, we call it this, so.
Yes.
Three thousand and, three thousand, three hundred and fifty eight square feet of Hayden. Hayden Public Library, which is for the for the taxpayer. Three thousand, three hundred and fifty eight square feet of it is absorbed by district offices, programming offices, uh, programming materials. Tech services, right? So that's what I'm talking about. So we need to, yes.
Sorry.
No, no.
So that vacated space, would it at first just be storage, not browsing area? Because obviously, that would take a lot of money to transform it. And then maybe for the future, you would want to transform it?
Uh, yeah, no, I would want to, I know that we have um. I can mention it. Yeah, uh, we have a, we have a, I'm a trust coming in specifically for Hayden. Two hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. Carol A. Jones Living Trust. Michelle can speak more to the details of the paperwork, but but in my mind, we could, out of the gate, you know, move district out. Rento Hayden. And then there is your space for twenty five thousand items, right? It would be all, it would be basically turning to the taxpayer and saying, you're going to get the full Hayden square footage for your, for your. Right? It would be a rental job, which is a lot cheaper than building, obviously. And it would ease the burden on our our projections. If we're looking at six percent growth in in all of Kootenay, obviously, it's it's a lot of the growth is up in Rathdrum area. I understand that. But if we're trying to say, hey, your your population is going to grow and you're going to need more space, which warrants another branch. I think if we go this approach, we can kick that twenty years down the road. If we're trying to say, hey, your, your population is gonna grow, and you're gonna need more space, which warrants another branch, I think if we go this approach, we can kick that twenty years down the road, rather than. What we'd be looking at maybe ten, where we didn't have to have another branch, Rathdrum just can't handle it, we have to have another branch. I think if we. With the advantages of being ourselves, just being us, top-of-the-line courier, people starting to understand that. Didn't even need Harrison, like, this is not just what they have. They have the full strength of the full, of the, of the C L N collection, and they can get it same day or next day, right? And being able to, to, to show that, because I know there's, what I've learned since I've been here is that there's still a sort of strong sense of. Individual library identity, like, this is, this is Rathdrum, this is my branch, right? This is my library. I, I think I was, when I first came here, I started using the word branch. And it kind of threw some, some people for a loop internally in the organization. I think of it as a branch. They think of it as, this is our library, and you just happen to be outsourcing. Centralized items to district. It's actually the other way around. This is a system. And even if Rathdrum remains small in its footprint, the peach, the patient that walks into Rathdrum needs to realize they got the full two hundred thousand item collection at their disposal, a couple clicks, and they'll get it fast. So there's a lot of work there, but, but this is what this is all about. I'm putting in this budget the potential for us to, um. And this is why I'm making a lot of the changes to get this money, is to enter into a lease. For the district. And it's probably gonna be roughly ten thousand a month kind of thing scenario, where it absorbs all of our, because we kind of did this at Mineral Drive, if you remember, we were at Mineral Drive. But because the books during the flood took up the whole middle. Right? That would have been the space where we put technical services, because the only thing that was in Mineral Drive was Post Falls district, but Hayden stayed the way it was. We're putting all of us together. In a building, it frees up Hayden, we got some money for a rental, and, and. I don't wanna talk a lot, but another factor here is that one of the biggest. Maybe more sensitive issues, we talk about Saint Marie's, and, and here, we could talk about Pinehurst and Cal, but the biggest one is gonna be Hayden and Port Lane. Right? Separate, right? The, the patrons over there who don't really understand that Port Lane isn't their library, but Hayden is. This is why, in my mind, Hayden needs a rental. Hayden needs to be able, well, Hayden will never be able to compete with the surroundings of Port Lane Public, okay? But I want them to be able, and I'm maybe a competitive guy, but I want them to compete with the inside, right? Give Hayden a top-of-the-line rental. You know, we're gonna gain a whole branch worth of square footage, which means easily twenty thousand items of collection space, right? And we don't have to invest in a major building project, like a new building or anything new, basically, we just need to make better use of the space we have. So that's what's happening in those lines.
And I mentioned, staying on budget too.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so I'm, I'm confused. You act like Hayden would get a new library, a rental library, but are you talking still about?
No.
You know, taking the admin out of.
Yeah. So if you, if you go to Hayden, and you see Hayden, and then you walk towards the back of the adult section, there's a door, and it goes into a back room. And the back room is three thousand five hundred, two thousand three hundred fifty-eight square feet, and it contains, uh.
So that's what you would do.
Yeah.
Use that space.
That space is gonna be reclaimed by Hayden Public. We, you know, whatever, we redesigned it nice.
And then would you have meeting rooms moved also?
Well, it could be whatever Hayden wants, or whatever we decide if we want it to be.
With the meeting, I would think the meeting rooms would be at the admin.
Oh, no, 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 no. So, so we're talking, so try and think of it this way. Right now, Hayden Public Library. Let's pretend that Lindsay and I, and, and, and we didn't work for C L N, and we were like a wheelchair company. And we rented out the back corner of Hayden. Right? Hayden Public Library is not entirely Hayden Public Library. Three thousand three hundred fifty-eight square feet is another entity. Which exists in that, which the public don't have any value, other than that we're trying, but, so, okay, so if we get them out of there. What we're doing is we're giving back to Hayden, but also to the entire district. Three thousand three hundred fifty-eight square feet, which is the equivalent to three of our, uh, uh, Spirit Lake, for sure, public post, apple, public post, so basically, we're reclaiming, without having to get a new building. A library building. We're reclaiming the same amount of square footage, so we can add collection out of the gate. So, I, I don't wanna turn to the public and say, yeah, dissolution, sad. In five years, in ten years, we'll be able, no, we can do it next year. Next year, we could already be showing them that we got the, we got the shelving, we got the rental, come visit, grand opening, cut a ribbon, beautiful library, all yours.
What? And also, have you considered filling up Post Falls?
Yeah, so.
Same thing.
But Post Falls is only.
I don't mean the, the office space, I mean, the book space. That's, there's a lot of empty space where the books are.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
You could double up the amount of.
We could be looking at, I mean, a lot of that was recently done because of the flood, but. It's not a question of, like, eight hundred and two square feet. But once the district was out of there, you'd be able to, because even, like, some of those rooms, if you just take the wall out, it becomes a much bigger space.
The main area, the books are, you could double. Should, should we make this a separate type of a discussion to do it?
Well, no.
I'm just, I wanna stay, because we're gonna, we're gonna run out of time with our budget. So. You're, we're gonna repurpose some office space into a library, book areas.
My only point, yeah.
Office space elsewhere.
Yeah, the only point is that if, if you just saw this draft and didn't understand, like, basically, I'm adding, you know, I'm adding a very large amount of money. A hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars to a line that didn't exist. Right? So, but basically, I'm saying, uh, if we do this, this is a great way for us to immediately come out of the gate. To make ourselves a great library system. Um, there's just so many advantages to it, and I know it's a lot of money, uh, but it's a lot less money than trying to build a library. Right? Because district offices can be kind of regular standard offices. They don't have to have any special, I mean, that should be nice, because I have to work there every day. So I'd like it to be nice, but, like, Mineral Drive was very nice. I'm hoping we're not like a Juan Sett or some, you know, industrial building or something, but the idea here is that it's so much cheaper to make this move. Than it would be to say, we need to build a new library to accommodate twenty thousand new items, to accommodate C I N, dissolution, et cetera. So. That's it. That's basically what you're seeing on the page there. That's the biggest maneuver.
My concern is, we don't have. The dollars amount in the, uh. In the collections to do that. That's what I wanted. I crapped money to go to instead of helping fund some of these things.
And that's fair. I mean, I, I put an extra fifty thousand in.
If you, if you wanted to add twenty thousand, what would that cost? Twenty thousand?
Well, there's not so much the, not so much what it costs upfront, because it wouldn't. It would be more a question of how collection development works, right? And, and getting items on the shelf in a certain way. I, it's all like, right out of the gate, we can dump. An extra two hundred and fifty, I mean, we could use some of the other trust money kind of thing to do something like that, but. You can get a bunch of books, but if you have nowhere to put them, they sit in boxes. I'm trying to do the, maybe the horse before the cart. This is the place where we're gonna put them. The shelves are there, right? Do we, do we think these shelves are? More bare than they could be? I don't know what it would look like, but out of the gate, you could be moving the collection around, right? So that the space is being used, and then you start building. And you would build collection the way we wanna build a collection. If we wanna focus on classics, we put our money into classics. If we wanna assess this data and say, you know what? Our patrons borrowed a lot of this. We put our money into this. So. I, my biggest concern isn't so much that we dump money into, like, all of the money into the collection in the first year. I'm just hoping, that's why I showed you the, the, the thirty, thirty-one. Scenario of the being, I wanna make sure we can stay, if we can stay at two fifty-five for just books. For the next ten years, I mean, that's good. Because that's fifty thousand more than we had been spending on books. Last year, right? So that, even though. It looks like a similar number, like I said before, we're spending, I put fifty thousand more in the book budget in draft four. So. I think we're having the draft four. I think it's an exciting, it's an exciting opportunity. Um, I know there's probably lots to think about, so I don't expect, you know, necessarily the. Snap you saying, but I, I did, it was just yesterday that it dissolved. This had been going on in my mind and in his mind for a long time. Uh, to me, this is a really exciting opportunity. To come out of forty years of a consortium. And turn around to the patrons and say, don't worry. You know, C L N is, is, is gonna be great. Kind of thing.
So is that pretty much your summary? That's okay. We needed all that. That was important. Um, Jesse Robinson, we can now, I guess, go to individual questions on the budget that we have. Now we got an overview.
Thank you. So, um, just below. That line, so.
Which one?
I'm about to say, um, the one we were just talking about, eighty fifty-five, so eight, eighty-six and eighty eighty-seven. Um. The rental lease Harrison and Post Falls. Is that to store? Books or supplies? And would that go away if this new area opened up?
No, so there used to be a rental lease line. It's the. Actually, it's rental lease district, nine thousand seven fifty. Uh, sorry, uh, eight eighty-five in fiscal year twenty-five. Nine thousand seven fifty. That was the cost of Ross Point Storage that we have off of forty-one. And that's coming to an end. So we're not gonna have any storage, like, we don't need, we're gonna, we're working actively over the summer to reduce our need for that storage space. So, um, the five hundred dollars that was Post Falls. Actually, I don't think was in the rental. I was in the. Was that professional, was in, it was buried in professional services. Um, and then the Harrison number. Was that in rent? So, so the nine seven five zero was Harrison and our offsite Ross Point Storage in Post Falls. That's what that was. And in second draft, the eight, eight five ten was actually meant for the Harrison lease. And Post Falls, but then with more transparency in this fourth draft, I've just broken them all out. So we do, we will pay a Harrison lease at eight, eight thousand seven. We do have a Post Falls lease. It's actually a lease that we paid for the land.
And.
At Post Falls, it's five hundred bucks. So I'm just trying to get everything more transparent. If it says lease now, it is a lease.
I gotcha.
Yeah, um, so. So now eighty-five is just a hundred percent a district lease.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Percy Plus.
Um, another question, not really related to what you're doing, but six fifteen communications marketing. I forgot to ask last, went from eighteen thousand, we had lowered that. Thirty thousand, I dropped it some, but. Why do we need to be spending that much? Can we? Put another ten thousand, or part of it was, I think we were paying for some pretty slick brochures. That seemed expensive that we could have. Done newsprinters. I, I.
I, 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 um. I think Communications Department is a very, very important department. Um, and. Again, maybe something that's not, obviously not obvious in there is that. Every year, we do a summer brochure for summer programming, and, and. A lot of programming-type promotions. They kind of lost sometimes between who, what fund is that coming? Is that programming? Is that marketing? This number for marketing is more accurate to what we want to accomplish with marketing. Marketing is the one that carries the financial burden for programming. Rack cards, programming, brochures, and stuff like, stuff like that. So. I, I'm, I'm happy with the number the way it is. Um. I dropped it only because there's flexibility there for us. I mean, the drop is from. Thirty to twenty-seven.
Very small.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's just to get a nice zero. I like that, a zero at the bottom. Um, so that's why there's a few odd numbers in there. But no, I, I would definitely, I know. One of my things is like staff, I'm gonna fight for my staff to get the call and stuff. Definitely argue, um, that Communications Department deserves a good. Uh, amount of money to be able to produce good quality. Um, it's, it's the website, social media, it's brochures, it's, uh. It's actually, it's also a Communications Department, so it handles, um, media requests. She's sitting right behind me. Like, Megan is the Communications Department, along with Diane, who's the webmaster. Yeah, so I, I would argue that it's, it's, it's a good amount of money. It's meant to pay for better. Um, marketing product, right?
You feel we didn't have enough this last year? That's my question.
I mean, it's.
Just wanna, or you wanna expand?
It's one of those departments where if that's what you get, that's what you make, right? And if you get more, you make better, right? So it's, um, could she do it for eighteen? She probably could, but then you're not gonna get the top quality type of products, or if, yeah, if, if, you know, if, if the program department says, hey, I wanna. I wanna be able to advertise this or that, or even what we're doing on the, on the, on the strategic plan, we would say, well, not gonna be as, you know, do it as well. So. To me, it's an important department, because it's basically the front face, you know, and maybe both in the virtual space and in the, and in the public space for marketing, right? It, it's. It's called the Communications Department, and that can be misleading, because it sounds like it's just like the media spokesperson, but it's communication and marketing, and it includes website, includes all virtual presence. So that's why.
My trade-off is, I would like to free up money to go, so that we didn't have to use a cramp for those things. We could free up more money to. Basically buy more of these books that we need for replacements here.
Yeah, I, I know, I know. I see what you're saying. I, I mean. To me, collection development is something that we do. This is our job as librarians. We're gonna do it. For the long haul. We're always doing it. So I don't know whether more money, more money doesn't necessarily mean a better collection, right? I, I think, I think what thing that the board is interested in here is a, is a stronger collection, or a cleaner collection, or a better collection, not a bigger collection.
Quality.
So, so that's the thing, like, I mean, if I, if I turn to my new question development person saying, hey, you have two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, our mantra on the poster on the wall is quality over quantity. Then it's not, it's not a question of how many books can I buy for two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, right? It's more a question of what books do we wanna focus on this year? Knowing that it's two hundred and fifty-five thousand.
It's also C I N. No longer gonna supply books. We need to buy more.
Yeah.
What our patrons want. Or we're getting, and maybe we just need to go buy more copies right away.
Absolutely. And that's all, and. I can't honestly tell you whether or not two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars is enough to meet. The, what the data will demand in the first year. I don't know. I do know that we spent two hundred thousand on books last year. And so I'm adding fifty thousand. So if there's any consolation to the idea that I wish you would add more, I am adding fifty thousand to what we spent last year.
You good on that?
Okay, I'm just.
Next.
I'm just looking.
Well, I was, I was talking about. I'm one, I wanna make sure the total salaries and benefits, that still include the twenty-two extra library operating hours that we've discussed before?
Yes.
Okay, that's good enough.
Okay. Yes, it does.
I wanna keep moving. And, and I, uh, after listening to recording, I think. My question was misunderstood last, and I don't need an answer this time around, but. My question to do with salaries is. The overall cost of salaries, how does that stand with, with relation to the industry as a whole? As a ratio, meaning salaries in comparison to the overall budget? Should salaries comprise forty percent of our budget? And you may not have that data, but are we? You know, do we have disproportionate amount overall in boarding? Benefits and paying, and, and you may not have that answer, but there must be some idea of an industry standard to say. Forty percent of a typical library operation is normally needed to support staffing and X amount is for the rest of the operation. So just, how do we, you think we're in the right place there? Because, you know, the, the public is interested in having books.
Yeah.
And, and they don't care about the employees, but they think we do. And so I sort of know, are we, are we kind of in the right place there, or do we know that answer? Because it's a big chunk of the budget.
Yeah.
Is it about the right ratio or percentage of the overall budget?
All I can say is that I remember in a previous version, like before I did any of these, there was a column that you guys received, which had that percentage amount, and I think it was around sixty. I'm more inclined to seventy, the seventies, I've seen places where the eighty, right? Uh, where the percentage, but I don't actually come to it from that metric. I'm coming to it from the other side, which is. What do I need to get this done? Right? So this, this amount of money, based on all, and I gotta think, obviously, Lindsay feels like all the background work on, you know. The full-time equivalencies and, and what it takes to, the efficiency analysis of what it takes to run the Public Services Department, right? This is what it costs to get done what we wanna get done. Whether that sits at seventy percent or eighty percent or forty, but to me, that's, that's maybe a nice metric after to look at, but what would be the result? Oh. It's only, or it's eighty, so let's drop it down. Okay, well, then we won't get that, or we need to get it up. But it's only forty, so let's add more, so we have staff doing this all day. Like. To me, it's not about that. It's about the efficiency to get the job done in the building, in the buildings, right? And we're, I, I think we're, we're, I think we're solid. I mean, we're probably. I wouldn't say tight, I'd say lean, or, but lean can be great if you're a marathon runner. Lean's great. So. We're, I would say we're lean, but it's not necessarily a negative term, like, I. We're, I would say we're lean, but it's not necessarily a negative term. Like, I wanna be, I wanna be efficient. I want my Public Services Department to have the right number of people to make sure they're on task with, with what they need to do. So. I can get the number. I, I'm guessing this is probably seventies, the seventy percent, sixty-nine? Okay. So we're in the seventy percent range. I think that's pretty standard.
Okay, I'm comfortable with it now. Maybe next year I'm gonna wanna see a percentage though, like, meaning what is the industry as a whole, what's considered the right balance?
Yeah.
More of a curiosity, and it helps us know whether we, we've overstaffed, is it disproportionate, or we kind of in line with, that's normal. But, okay, I'm, I'm good with the answer.
So Lindsay did give us, um, a workup a couple of years ago. I, maybe it was before. Maybe you were, okay. So, um, and we at the time were, I think, low sixties, and I believe it was like sixty-eight to seventy-four. With several different states. She looked at several different states and different sizes of libraries as well. We were for sure the lowest on the list, and the average, I think, was sixty-eight to seventy-four-ish for percentage on salary.
Where we were?
No, that standard is sixty-eight to seventy-four. We were like, look, I think we were like sixty-two or something like that. Something.
See, um, I always stop in your name.
Okay, so we need to come up with the, the main figures to publish before next month, so we need to do that today. Um, so I was thinking, uh. Excuse me, director said that if we did one percent, that would put us in the negative pretty quick. So, uh. I'm to trust your judgment. Not sure I can do three percent yet, but I was at a city council. City council meeting, and they said that the growth for that city was like eight to nine percent. Um, I think that that would more than cover the two percent increase that. That's proposed here. So that, that would actually. I'm thinking do that without raising taxes on individual families because there's, if there's eight or nine percent growth. Then that's gonna cover the extra money by spreading it out over more people. So I'm, I'm inclined to two percent at this point.
Thank you, trustee Otis. I was of similar thought. I'm, I'm right now in the two percent range in my mind looking. Mostly also looking at the five-year plan as to how it, how this year affects the following. Trustee Plus.
I, I'm just gonna verify the, uh, growth is on here. That's eighty-five thousand. So that's already the county's. Growth figure of how much extra we're getting, like why you're trying to. For that there's growth we have to cover by increasing taxes. This, if you increase taxes two percent. That's. The tax bill on that house is going up. It's not like. The growth out there is going to not make your taxes go up.
Uh, so I, I think that that growth that's listed. And so lying four hundred underneath that. I think that's just. A brand-new growth, but every year you keep adding more and more and more houses. So that's more and people to.
That's, that's the assessor, how much the value of the county, the assessed value of the county grew. Our portion, not the whole county, but for our little bit above. That we get of the whole county budget, that's how much the county grew. Last year and this year. So if we do nothing, we'll get more.
Taxing.
The tax, the tax base, there's more houses, there's gonna be more houses taxed. So more money will come in if we don't do, if we do zero, it's eighty-five thousand. So you can't just say. City grew eight percent, so if we make. Somebody's tax bill go up two percent. That's reasonable because the city grew, well, their, their tax bill went up.
Um, I guess maybe I need it clarified. Stick with the two percent. That isn't the two percent, two percent of our last years. What we took last year. It's, it's not the individual taxpayer. Actual taxes going up two percent. It's, no, it's two percent of what we took last year.
Well.
And it's a very, those are very different numbers.
It's two percent of what we took. More than we took last year, the budget.
Yeah, but it doesn't raise a person's taxes.
From the county assessor. Taking our budget and adding it up with all the other budgets and putting it out. It's, it's hard to track exactly. If somebody's house value goes up more than other people's house, it's, it's not gonna be, but on the average, if we take two percent more. Then our light item on their tax bill is gonna be two percent higher than what's left.
Well, again, this is, you get in the weeds a little bit, and I, I'm, I'm also trying to wrap my mind around some of this stuff, but. I mean, there's, first of all, there's two lines there. One is growth estimate, which is, is an estimate from the county saying the estimate growth. For fiscal year twenty-six is ninety thousand, six, seven, eight. And when I first, my first draft, which isn't, the numbers aren't great anymore because they've been changed, but the first draft I showed for six years worth. And I just put in a six percent growth, like, I just put in the same kind of growth every year. That's assuming, uh, you don't grow, right? But the growth could be better than that. And that's one number. But to say that, okay, if we get really good growth, we should take zero percent. I'm not sure that's particularly logical, but they're two separate numbers. One is the growth number, and then one is the percentage that you guys can take. One to three, or zero to three. But I wanna go back to this chart, which, again, I'm not the expert. I have financial offices and stuff, but. I'm not sure we're looking at this in the right way.
That's messed up.
Okay, so it may be, it may be.
It's taking, it's accounting, somehow or another, the state refund is buried in there someplace.
Well, that's, that's fine, but I guess my concern is that one, one year the library took three percent. And the taxes for a per, a person in Post Falls went up zero. One year we took zero, it went up ten. We took zero, it went up one, it took two. The one of that, one year we took zero, went down. I'm not sure there's a direct correlation between the percentage you take. And what's going to happen to the taxpayers' bill.
On the average, it has to be the same. That's what it's.
Well, this is what I'm saying. I think, and I think this is your responsibility as the governing body to, to unpack this. And then I can ask my finance officer, I'm packing. I'm not gonna pack it. Someone needs to unpack this because I don't wanna go year after year thinking that there's a direct correlation. Between going zero, one, two, three, and what's gonna happen. So if you pick two. This year, I'll be sure that next year I'm gonna come to you and show, hey, you picked two, but I don't see two percent increase anywhere in the taxpayer's life. It doesn't look like two on their bill. It doesn't look like, and you might say, well, look at the library line. Will it be two? I don't know. That's, that would be the question. So I think personally, you should look at the, do we take zero, one, two, or three and go back to our constituents and say, hey, look. You can't go back to them and say, we picked two and therefore we didn't raise taxes. Raising taxes has nothing to do with the percentage you pick. But you don't know which, you don't know. You don't know those. That's, I guess that's what I'm saying, unless this is completely wrong. I didn't make it, but I got it from people I trust.
Those are individual houses. You gotta look at the average.
Okay.
Have to look at the average of all of Post Falls, the average of all of, you know, the county.
Yeah, and that would suggest that, that, that if this is only one, the average will drop from fifty-one percent will hit. Uh, in that particular, it was zero percent. The year, the year that we took zero percent, which was twenty-twenty-three. And I got, and I got every single tax person's bill, I would expect to see zero percent. I'm not sure that's true. Maybe true. This is not my speciality. I'm just looking at this and saying, you guys are trying to figure out, do we pick zero, one, two, three, and how do we talk to our? Constitutions, constituents about that? I would say, listen, we're giving you what you want. You know, great director. We're giving you what you want. What do you wanna give us? Do you wanna give us zero percent to do it? Do you wanna give us one percent to do it? Right? Because if you ask me, if you give me three percent, I can perform better for what you want. If you give me two percent, I perform one percent less. Than if you gave me three percent, because some of it has to do with what we can do with the money you give us. Right? So I don't know if it's a, I don't know if you can really go and say, because if that's the case, just go zero percent. Go zero percent and then turn to your constituents and say, we didn't raise taxes. But that's not really true. Otherwise, you would always choose zero percent.
Do some years we get money from the state as well, which makes the taxes look lower.
Yeah.
Even though we spent more money on something else in the county. I think that's all. And then I think we also paid off our bond levy, whatever there. So that's something, say, is a little plus for the taxpayers. That it's not a huge piece. At least I looked at my tax bill, it's not a big piece of the library, but it's. It's money that's not being taken anymore. It's paid off, so.
That's, that's one of the reasons I would be willing to go to two percent myself also, because that they're not gonna get that bond anymore.
We're nearing a lot of two percent so far. I guess, are we looking also then, is anything else to be, if we go two percent? Not just trying to get done so we get out of here or something, even though I love this kind of stuff, but. If, if we go two percent, is there anything we need to shuffle around that we disagree with what? Director, the business manager, and a specific director presented to us, we need to, we say there's too much or too, I'm not trying to shuffle around. I think. This gives them the tools to do the job that they want. They gotta live with this, they presented this to us.
My overall thing is. We're still taking money out, even at two percent. We're taking money out of that account. Program. Yes, you can say that money's going directly to material. Because we're not paying for the money, or paying for the material from our budget. That part that I-CRIM fund is paying. We have less I-CRIM money later. And I wanted the I-CRIM money to be held to increase our. Collection, especially when we have this opportunity to. Replace C I N. So any place I can look at, like. Marketing. Item was communications, marketing, anything that I can look at, that maybe we can do less and not take as much from I-CRIM. I would like to do that, but that's not gonna change the overall amount that. We're gonna present at the budget meeting. They're not gonna see all this detail. So. But the top level I'm okay with. I'd just like to take less from my.
The I-CRIM money is being used for materials and books.
If the goal is to take less from I-CRIM, then as the fiscal, as the business manager, I recommend that the board. Do three percent this year. Because that way we're only using sixty thousand of the I-CRIM money. And we're already giving fifty thousand more to the collection in order to. Recoup what C I N is not giving us. We also think about fifty thousand dollars is equal to one percent. So we're getting rid of two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars a year in the bond money. That's five percent. So. Even though it's not a direct correlation, like the dark, the director was saying, that the. If you take three percent, if it was a direct correlation, then the taxpayer would still be receiving a two percent. Discount on their taxes. This is a great year to take three percent. Cause you're not raising taxes, you're actually giving money back to the taxpayers. You're saying we paid off the bond, we're being fiscally conservative. And we're using the money well. And so this will be the year to take the three percent, in my opinion. And there's one last little piece. Is that when I spoke with Alan Dorf, who is part of the State Levy Commission, that I'll be starting to work on the paperwork for the L two here in the next few weeks. He was saying, and the county, I spoke with them as well, there are thousands of different data points that go into deciding. How much taxes are taken from. The taxpayer. The library only receives two percent of what the county collects. So the decision that you're making today, we are just one little dot in those thousands. Of considerations. So I would advocate, please vote for three percent. Thank you.
And we're one dot. But we were elected to be careful and be good stewards of taxpayers' money, and it pulls those little dots together. Take the maximum if they can. Everybody's property taxes probably go up. Anybody else be, make sure everyone else has a chance to speak. Rusty Robinson.
Where's the, where's the biggest difference between, um, the one and, or the two and three, I guess, two and three percent?
It's in the, um, I-CRIM money, I believe, makes up the difference.
Yeah, so, I mean. Yeah.
It's the same, I think.
So it is.
We have two hundred, there's no difference. We have two hundred and twenty-eight thousand of I-CRIM money. If you give us two percent this year, we're gonna burn through. Uh, a hundred and twelve thousand of it. We'll cut it in half, basically. And this is why this first draft, which the month, the numbers don't matter now because they're all wrong. But it just showed that. You, you will have to get, in order for us not to go in the negative, and to keep the collection number to, whatever was here, two forty, to keep it the same. I was hoping I'd get a, over the course of six years, I need one time three percent. I'm gonna need one time two percent, and you can give me one percent for years. In order to maintain. Now, you gave me two percent every year, right? But to me, to go back, like, it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a. It's like, we don't wanna raise taxes, so we're not gonna go to three, but we'll take two. This, this doesn't make sense to me. Like, it's not about raising taxes, it's about deciding which percentage you wanna take. As a way to show that your constituents, that you're gonna try and get the job done. Right? Because it's not directly related. But anyway, bottom line is, in order to keep collections the same, using I-CRIM money, I'm milking the I-CRIM money. Slowly. Over five years. But if you, like, if you were to give us one percent now, we would absorb all that I-CRIM money right away. And then next year would be a struggle to stay at two fifty-five. So the day where we can say, with the day that I'm presenting you a budget with. Four hundred thousand dollars for books, it's not gonna happen. Unless all of a sudden we get a massive, right? We have two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for books in the budget, and I wanna keep it that way for a number of years to build our collection. If we happen to get a trust fund that is like for books, then great, we can dump fifty thousand here. We get some trust funds and they're specified, like this is for Hayden, or this is for that. But if we were to get an influx of money, we can put it into books. I'm trying to create stability. Right? And that I-CRIM money is enabling me to create stability. But if you, if you give me three percent, like, you know, Michelle said, if you give three percent this year, I'm only eating up sixty thousand of my current money. If you give me two percent this year, I'm eating a hundred and twelve thousand. If you give me one percent, I'm eating basically a big chunk. And then what happens the following years? My goal here isn't to have an influx. Of collection development money this year to do a bunch of projects, it's to maintain a good number from now on. So that we can always be quality over quantity, building a good collection.
And it appears to me that. The ways is drafted up, where they take one percent, two percent, or three percent. We're still. The same revenue coming in across the line, which is burning through. At a faster rate or slower rate, the I-CRIM money, and our expenditures are the same way across the board here. So we're not.
I, I kind of, I slightly object to the idea that, that is going to programming or is going somewhere. The I-CRIM money is going to collections. That's it. And, and even if you wanna say, yeah, but if you didn't put it there, you could put it somewhere else. The bottom line is that two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Includes the I-CRIM money. And the next year, two hundred and fifty-five, that includes that. It's not like I'm changing programming or marketing because of I-CRIM. I-CRIM money is strictly being determined as a way to keep the collection development level adequate.
Good. Trustee.
Yeah, so if we publish it at three percent, um, then we can always vote for two percent next month. Uh, but if we publish at two percent, we cannot raise it because they have to publish that amount, um, so the public can see it. And, yeah, you can't raise it after that point unless you republish it and go through another period of time.
What's up between, so we could do, if, if we want, we could do three percent now. And then, when, when we change it, after the hearing, or before the budget hearing?
Uh, when we do the final vote. So we could just agree to publish it at three percent with the idea that I still wanna do two percent. Um, but it gives us more options if we publish at three percent.
Right, but if we do a final vote, we can do a final vote today too, can't we?
Uh, I think we have to do the final vote after the public hearing.
Oh, okay, you're right. Okay, after the hearing, right. But I mean, we can come up with a number today, and if we don't come up with a number today, and we're not happy, and we're having a special meeting because. The budget won't be done before the next, and the next meeting. Thing takes place after the budget hearing. So we have, so either solace today, or we have a special meeting, I think. And jump for trustee Robinson, you had the floor a lot. I have to balance it out.
So I see what trustee Otis is saying. If we say three percent now. Um, it doesn't mean that's what we all decide on, but it gives us an option. And then during the budget.
During the budget hearing, which is what we're supposed to do also as. We're supposed to listen to the community and. Listen to why we were voted in and all that other stuff, but we were supposed to listen to the community. Um, and then we could lower it to whatever goes zero, we wanted. If it's, but if you start at three, you got the option. Because at two, you're saying we can't go up unless you do all that other, like reopen and everything, so I'm fine with saying three today. And that's just to give an option overall and let the people speak. The public speak.
Trustee plus.
Somehow or another, you're looking at total revenues that line four eighty or below it, but it's the same all the way across. It isn't, that, I mean, that's because more I crimp money is being added to make.
We understand that.
The wind, the lines that matter is property tax total. And it for one percent is a hundred thousand less than three percent. Those numbers, whatever we pick, property tax total goes to the assessor. He gets it from every district, how much money, he knows how many houses and how how many property owners are in each. And he's, they've got an algorithm, but that total amount. For all the districts that submitted is how much money the county has to collect. And then it has split it up on where all those districts are, so the more money, if if every, you know, the fire departments, the highway departments. And I see the county, everybody puts in three percent. They're putting in a total amount more. The the maximum total amount. And that will absolutely increase. The taxpayers' bill. If everybody does that. And everybody is doing that for the most part, the taxpayer bill will probably go up. Three percent or more. Because. Well, anyway, the. The county wants to take three percent, they got all their people. We can contribute to slowing that down in our own little way by taking two percent. What I don't like about it is that. The total amount we spend is gonna be the same because we're robbing from the I crimp, we have a trust fund. The trust fund is the I crimp money that was paid by I crimp to replace the books. That's considered a, to me, a trust fund, it's for that, yes, it's being used. To buy materials, but what you're doing is you're. Take taking money that we would have gone, would have on our own, out of our own. Budget used for materials, we're using that to pay for salaries, or we're using that to pay for other things. I am advocating that we keep this I crimp money. As kind of extra money that gets added to the books. Because that's what it was for. And somehow or another, we've got a mindset that we're gonna have to spend this much, no what, no matter what, so we're gonna. Take it out of I crimp if we don't give you, if you don't take the three percent. I am not at all going to go on record of having voted for three percent. As I ran on record that I was going to lower taxes and work on keeping them lower, yes, they did get. Um, after twenty years or twenty five years, whatever, they did get the bond to. Be paid off. But that. Is not a reward to go. That they paid the bond off, it's not to be looked at as a reward, but now you don't, now you're not spending as much so we can raise the other taxes. They they should be happy that that bond is paid off. But I'm not gonna go on record of going more than two percent, and it's. It is going to raise taxes of every taxing district goes to three percent.
Thank you, trustee Robinson.
I'm moving to extend the meeting for ten minutes.
I was gonna ask for something, it's been moved to extend the meeting for how many minutes?
Ten.
Ten minutes, or all those in favor?
I.
The motion is carried, the most, the meeting is extended by ten minutes.
Okay, so we're not voting for three percent right now or two percent, we're just having a consensus on what to. Oh, we're not, we're not voting.
I don't want to publish anything more. I'm having the two percent. But publishing might, I mean, it sounds to me like, uh, I'm just guessing here, can't speak for him, but I feel like trustee plus is supporting two percent. I heard a lot of two percents before, I heard three percent here, give a hand up, I'm sorry.
I'm fine with three percent because that's means we can go lower, we can't go higher. Yeah, so just to reiterate, I don't want three percent, I just want the option in case, you know, we change our minds by then, but um. Yeah, right now, my my brain is fixed on two, but I think it would be wise to publish three and that gives us options.
So we're gonna publish a number we don't really think we're gonna support.
Yeah, why would you do that?
I don't know, I'm not sure you understand it either. I'm feeling two percent across, yes.
It gives us more options for the public to tell us what they feel. And and what they're interested in. If we, we handicap ourselves a little bit, if everybody comes into that meeting saying that they want three percent, and we don't really have the option for.
See, we'll save it at one three percent, and we say, oh, that's nice, thank you, hey, come two percent. Okay. So we have this meeting, obviously, is the next budget thing, the budget hearing? Sharon, okay, and then we have another meet, is it at that meeting, we approve or disapprove the budget, or do we do that again in a separate meeting, remember?
It's the next one.
The separate meeting?
The one that followed me.
And it's regular meeting, okay. Can be talked into three percent probably, if he's, if it gets this job done, because we we have flexibility dropping.
Yeah.
So. Trustee plus.
Well, we have three anyway, so.
I won't be here for the following meeting.
Following regular meeting?
Following regular meeting. You're gonna do it without me if that's what it is, but.
It's a twenty.
The twenty third.
No, it says twenty first, I thought you said twenty.
No. Be here for the budget meeting, but. The people that come to the hearing. Are not representing the whole county, I've got. The majority of people that voted for me and trustee Hanley. Did it because that was our. We were going to not raise taxes much. So. That's what I'm going by, the people that voted. Not the fifteen or ten people that come to the meeting. They can point out what they want, but generally, it's it's a, it's gonna be a bunch of dissenters that come.
Okay, and I don't want to put too much politics in it, but I don't know if I voted, I said anything about not raising taxes, it just can be good. Stewards of the taxpayers' money, and we did go with zero percent our first year, one percent last year, it doesn't mean we have to keep climbing up. We also have to look at the needs of the, in my opinion, the library, there's a new directive here with a different direction we had. And inflation and cost of living has gone up, well. And we can lock them into the same. But the money we had coming in here for the last couple of years, I know, I know we have growth money, because the county is growing, there's more, a bigger tax base, I understand that. And that comes in an event, I think it's fifty thousand, I think it's mighty.
I believe three trustees said to go for three.
Yeah.
Right now.
Yeah, we didn't vote, but yes, you're correct. Trustee plus, we didn't vote, I understand that.
We we have a lot of people that are on fixed income that only got two. It's two point three percent increase in social security and. They. Have to pay their property tax out of their fixed income or whatever return they have. So just saying inflation goes up doesn't help them, they're they're paying more for eggs, they're paying more for their groceries, they're paying more for gas. And.
And they got a two and a half percent increase.
And they don't, they don't appreciate having their tax bill go up. And if we can show, in my opinion, if I can show the constituents have voted for me, that. We resisted going to three percent. They'll be happier, because I'll guarantee you those county commissioners are gonna go for three percent, that's the bulk of it. And the school districts are gonna go for thirty percent, and. I want to hold the line, so.
And I want to, you know, tell us also to support the library, the library, as long as this is what they need to get the child to. I'm influenced by that, but I'll also be influenced to see what the what the public has, it's a, it's an interesting idea. The ones where, I mean, I have a feeling I'm gonna jump back to two percent after this is, after this is all over with. Unless, you know, we get some extraordinary line out the door telling us we have to. Spend three percent, an increase, yes, trustee Robinson.
Can we vote? We have four minutes left for the rest of the meeting.
So you're calling the questions that the right.
I, well, I was going to, but I believe that there wasn't a motion and I couldn't.
There wasn't, you can make a move.
I move that we make a vote on saying three percent for now, to publish three percent for now.
It's been moved.
Uh, this is not an action item. So I think this is just a, okay, let's get a general consensus on what. Director to do.
That's a good point. All right.
Publish three percent.
Two percent. Right now, I'm letting go with three. You published that. At the, at some point after this meeting before the budget hearing, I guess you do, so they know what they're. I mean, to talk about.
Like two weeks before the budget hearing. It has to be in the paper for two weeks or something.
Yeah, there's a certain exact timeline on that, I think that the clerk does that.
Probably within a week you'll be.
Is that the clerk combination job and 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 the director, yeah, that's one of the things that gets published, okay. Well, okay, well, and I guess.
Using the format that was done last year, because we corrected it.
So from parliamentary there, um, vice chair, can we say that we're going with three percent right now to be published, is that considered an action?
Um, I think so, I remember just accepting that it's gonna be published.
Okay.
But we're not making any final decisions.
I think we have a majority saying three percent right now. You know, you see, it's it's, trustee pass disagrees, sure, it's on record that way. Any further discussion on the budget? Nope, okay, that finishes that one. See budget, response to public comments. Again, I don't make. Responses to public comment from people that spoke today, that so we had another meeting, but this was from other places and things that were published, so my response. Is in relation to the dissolution of the C I M. It would seem the Marxists are at it again. To accuse your enemy of what you are doing. You are doing to create confusion. Or following Saul Linsky who promotes accusing the other side of that which you are guilty. So the C I N board decided to dissolve. That encoded body sowing chaos and then blames the C I N, I've seen all of them, I'm sorry, for the destruction. So in today's press sort of, we might read the chair of the C I N referred to the body, the C I N body as a treasure. And it's my opinion that the body of pirate queens who stole the treasure is the is the body of. Pirate queens who stole the treasure from our community. That's my cover. Does anyone else have a response to public? Okay, hearing none. Okay, we said. So and. We have any future agenda requests? Gender item request for future meetings? Not aware of any, okay. Uh, next, set special and regular meeting dates, I don't think we have any special meetings, any, we see any for a special meeting, I don't think I do. No, well, then our next regular meeting is already published down at the bottom, August twenty first. The budget hearing. Fourteenth preceding there. So. Trustee plus.
You don't need to restate. For future agenda items, they're already on the list.
Parking lot of. Pass requests, yes, I I and I didn't take all of them, but I inherited all this from trustee Odison. Chair Odison at the time.
Okay.
And I have my own from the last meetings, and some of the few things were addressed already here, so I am trying to keep a list of. What was asked for in the past, it still hasn't made it on the agenda, yes.
I guess it'd be nice to add that list red at some point to make sure.
Okay. And I'll do that, be happy to. I'll have to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
It's been moved to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.